Good morning. Today is the 10th of June 2021 and we are at the Growth, Infrastructure and Waste Committee, number five of 2021. I note councillors' attendance and I note that myself, the CEO, councillor Tully, councillor Johnick, councillor Doyle, councillor Ireland, councillor Feigna and councillor Milligan are in attendance. We have received an apology from councillor Coonseman. Councillor Coonseman has actually requested a leave of absence from this committee meeting due to her attendance today at the Queensland Local Government Disaster Management Conference. Do I have a second for that leave of absence? Councillor Ireland is a second. I'll put that to the vote, those in favour. It's unanimous of the people that are in the room. I'll just ask, has anyone heard from councillor Madsen? No, so I'll just note his absence here. And we'll move on. Declarations of interest in matters on today's GIW agenda. Do we have any declarations? None? I have one to make. In accordance with section 150 EW of the Local Government Act 2009, I reasonably believe that councillor Paul Tully has a declarable conflict of interest in item two, titled Appointments of the Urban Utilities Board Members. The nature of this council's ordinary council meeting on the 27th of May 2021, councillor Tully raised his displeasure at Mr Bruce Lesley not being recommended for reappointment. Councillor Tully then went on to read Mr Lesley's CV. As reported in the Fasafirn Guardian Tribune on the weekend, councillor Tully said, as a city, we should recognise the contribution that Dr Lesley has made during that time. I won't be supporting the motion because I think he's one of the most eminently qualified members to be on the board, either previously or now as a city councillor. We don't want to lose that sort of knowledge and experience and that's quite unusual for people appointed to a board not to be offered a second term. The Fasafirn paper also stated that the role as a board member pays around $60,000 a year. This prompted me to do some research. There is a Brisbane Times article dated the 19th of August 2017, titled 'Your Guide to the Ipswich Mayor by Election' by Tony Moore, and in it it says councillor Tully received three donations totaling around $5,000 from his campaign manager, Bruce Lesley, a mechanical engineer who was recently appointed by council to the board of Queensland Urban Utilities. A search of the electoral commission Queensland's electronic disclosure system does indeed back up this statement. I note the electoral commission Queensland lists that Mr Lesley made four donations totaling $6,203 in July, August 2017 for councillor Tully's unsuccessful run in the 2017 mayoral by-election. I note the local government act states that a prescribed conflict of interest is for particular loans and gifts. It states, one, a councillor has a prescribed conflict of interest in a matter if a) a gift or loan is given by an entity or the donor that has an interest in the matter in a circumstance mentioned in the subsection, two, and b) the gift or loan is given during the relevant term for the councillor, and c) all gifts, loans or sponsored travel or accommodation benefits under section 150 EH given by the donor to the councillor or a close associate of the councillor during the council's relevant term totaling $2,000 or more. I note that the $6,203 donation was not made during the relevant term, namely that it was not made in connection with the most recent election of 2020, so it's not a prescribed conflict of interest. However, the local government does go on to describe what a declarable conflict of interest. So part three, clause 150 E N states, a councillor has a declarable conflict of interest in a matter if a) the councillor has or could reasonably presume to have a conflict between the councillor's personal interests or the personal interests of a related party of the councillor and the public interest, and b) because of the conflict, the councillor's participation in a decision about the matter might lead to a decision that is contrary to the public interest. I note that today we are not considering the reappointment of Mr Bruce Lesley. However, based on the statements made by councillor Tully at our 27th of May 2021 meeting, I believe that there is a conflict between councillor Tully's personal interests or the personal interests of a related party of councillor Tully and the public interest, and that because of the conflict, councillor Tully's participation in a decision about the matter might lead to a decision that is contrary to the public interest. I seek a second to my motion. But this is a declarable...
What's the margin?
In the beginning, I said, in accordance with section 150 EW of the Local Government Act 2019, I reasonably believe that councillor Paul Tully has a declarable conflict of interest and that I believe that you should be asked to, that we should have a vote to see whether you should stay in the room, or I've opened to you whether you think you should stay in the room or not, councillor Tully. So to open up a discussion, I do need a second.
Mayor, I'm advised that you don't need a second.
I don't need a second. Okay. In that case, I'll open it up for discussion.
Thanks, Mayor. This is a matter that was unknown to me, and I abide by the decision of the committee here today, obviously. You correctly state that the report to us doesn't have any reference to Mr Dr Lesley. It refers to other people. And there were matters previously, three or four years ago, and I'll accept whatever the committee. I don't believe I've got a conflict in a personal sense. And, yeah, the comments that I made previously were in relation to a person who hasn't been appointed, like he hasn't been appointed to the board. So that's history. We weren't discussing his appointment as opposed to someone else, and that's reflected in the recommendation. But having said that, I'll abide by the... I can certainly, and over the years, everyone's going to have situations where they've had some connection with a person, and also situations where that's not even relevant to the matter, directly relevant to the matter before us today. So, but I'll accept the decision of the committee whether or not I can stay, because I do have some concerns about how, obviously, how this matter has transpired.
Thank you. I note, councillor Tully, you have to accept the decision of this room anyway, so I'll leave that open for discussion. Like I said, I do note the fact that Dr Bruce Lesley is not being considered, but I still contend that this is declarable and this is something that we do need to discuss and vote on, because the way that you've spoken about it in the media and also in the meeting, I do think that there would be, a reasonable person would believe that there is conflict there and that you may make a decision that's contrary to public interest.
Just to clarify, Mayor, what is the conflict with the decision that this committee will be making?
Yep. In the Act, it states that, and I'll just quote it again, the council has or could reasonably presume to have a conflict between the councillor's personal interests or the personal interests of a related party of the council and the public interest. So based on the conversation and what happened here on the 27th of May, and the passion that, and the closeness of Dr Lesley to councillor Tully, I think shows a personal interest that could conflict with the public interest. So he may vote a certain way because of that interest with Mr Lesley, Dr Lesley.
If Dr Lesley isn't a contender, if we're not discussing his appointment, is there still a conflict of interest?
I guess that's what we're discussing here today. I put to the chamber that it is because it is colouring, looking at the appointment of the people in that paper, and therefore it is a conflict.
Mayor, I think that in the context that the rest of us didn't know how the board happens and that we didn't get the letter from the 20th of November, so we weren't aware that he wasn't, that he was up for election and then didn't get elected, I think it was up to somebody who had some knowledge of it to ask why the country councillors, councils weren't represented. I think that he was just bringing it to the attention, not so much that it was Dr Lesley, but that we were missing out on representation on the board, because we weren't aware that any of that had happened when he was put up in the 20th of November letter, or the letter of November, that he was nominated. So somewhere in between, something had happened and we lost representation. I think it's just a seb.
If I could speak to the matter of the conflict, I think probably during this item, we will probably have to go into closed session to have those. We've been given confidential documents by Urban Utilities to discuss that. If I could put that forward. I don't know if councillor CEO.
I think that the appropriate process from here is for other councillors to express their view and for a vote to be taken by this council in relation to the conflict of interest matter that the mayor has raised.
Thank you.
So just confirm, sorry, just confirming, Mayor CEO, no closed session?
Not in relation to the conflict of interest. When the matter itself is discussed and the individual directors that are nominated are discussed, then my strong advice is that that is in closed session.
If they are, I mean, we're talking about something that the meeting might intend to do later. I mean, we will decide whether we go into closed session later and what the discussion is, but this is about the conflict on the item, item number two.
Whether councillor Tully could participate in that.
Yeah, I understand that, but nothing further.
Going by the CEO's suggestion, may I go around the table? Councillor, would you like to say anything else about?
I think the story in that newspaper was drawn from the commentary in the, you know, at the meeting.
It looks like it is.
Yes. I don't believe that I have a conflict, but if the committee rules otherwise. But even if they accept that I have a conflict, I'd certainly, that they could vote for me to stay here and to decide, and including that, if they vote for me to stay, it could be a decision that I not vote on the matter as well.
Okay. Councillor Madsen, would you like to add anything to the...
No.
No? No? Okay. Councillor Johnick, microphone. Sorry, councillor Madsen, your microphone wasn't on. Could I just... Okay. So councillor Madsen indicated he doesn't wish to speak.
Apologies, Chair.
Councillor Johnick?
I understand where you're coming from, but I don't feel...
It's on?
Oh, it's on, sorry. But I don't feel in the item that we're actually speaking to and voting on today that it would be a conflict, so I'm happy for councillor Tully to stay.
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with councillor Johnick's comment. I also note councillor Tully's comments that this related to just some general commentary, which, you know, was talking about the background of the decision-making process. Having said all that, we, this council, talk all the time about doing, you know, managing our conflicts very closely. So what's in the best interests of the council and certainly councillor Tully, if we err on the side of caution and proceed on the basis that it is a conflict, but that's just my thoughts.
Thank you.
I don't think he has a conflict on what we're discussing today.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Ollin.
Yeah, neither do I. So through you, Chair, councillor Milligan, do you have anything to add?
I, Mayor, acknowledge that you've provided the declarable conflict of interest. However, I believe that councillor Tully would be able to stay within the meeting and vote on the matter, as the recommendations in the report are not specific to provide a material.
Thank you. In closing, I'll just say that obviously I'm going to be voting to support this. I do believe that there is a personal interest with councillor Tully, with a related party, that may make our decision on what we need to decide on, item two, contrary to the public interest. I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour. I see that I am the only vote. Those against, I look around the table, councillor Madsen, councillor Johnick, councillor Ireland, councillor Feigna and councillor Milligan. Those abstaining, councillor Doyle.
Well, could I seek some advice from yourself and/or the CEO, please? Is it appropriate for, is it required for me to abstain on this issue?
Yes, yes. Yeah, you can't vote on your own.
Okay, if that can be recorded, please. Thank you.
So obviously councillor Tully cannot vote on this. So the motion did not get up and councillor Tully will be staying in for the discussion on and voting on item two. We now move on to business outstanding, and there is nil. So we move on to item one, which is confirmation of minutes. And I'll move these minutes. Do I have a second for these minutes?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Ollin. Any discussion on those minutes? There being none, I'll put the minutes to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I know it's unanimous with the people in the room and it's carried. Thank you. We now move on to item two, which is the appointment of Urban Utilities board members. May we have the relevant council officer to the lectern, please?
Mayor, could I seek some advice through you and the acting CEO before we proceed with this matter, please?
Okay. I'll ask you to sit down, Mr Thomas. Thank you.
It's in relation to the last vote that was taken, I accept that. But I need to know, you know, to protect my interests, whether or not the, how will I phrase this, whether or not the consideration of this report, which will touch on matters that you've already raised, whether or not that does require me to now declare a conflict separately, now that we're considering this very report. It's just a very unusual situation that's arisen, that even though this report doesn't refer to the appointment of Dr Lesley in the recommendations, whether or not I've got any other duty to declare an interest at this moment or in the course of the consideration of the report.
I would think that we've already dealt with that matter, councillor Tully. I raised it as an issue because I think it was an issue that we had to discuss and this council has decided to allow you to be part of it and that it wasn't. So, and I'll ask, you may have a different view, CEO, but I find it perplexing that you're asking now for advice when we've just dealt with the matter.
No, that was in relation to the matter that you had raised. But it also, a second question, if I'm not obliged to raise anything now, am I obliged, if we get on to the issue of Dr Lesley and that's specifically raised, am I obliged to, at that point, declare a conflict?
The advice I would provide is that the matter has been dealt with by the previous resolution. I do have a view and some advice. However, the council has made its decision in relation to whether or not you are able to participate in the decision on this matter.
Thank. Just one further question. Am I permitted then, if appropriate in my mind at the conclusion of the discussion, to abstain from the actual vote that may be taken at the conclusion of that debate?
I would think that would be, would be possible process-wise.
Yeah, but would it be appropriate? If in my view that it's appropriate, given the nature of the discussion and to avoid any suggestion to...
It's really a matter for you, councillor.
Yeah, but there's no prohibition on abstaining.
No, as the council's previously discussed, abstention is considered to be a vote in the negative. It's not in the legislation, the ability to abstain and have it recorded as such as we previously discussed in public meetings. So any abstention would be taken as a vote in the negative, unless you were to decide to leave the room and not continue to participate in the discussion on this matter.
Thank you.
I think just also, as Chair, councillor Tully, the Act does leave it up to the council to just make those kind of decisions. And it isn't always black and white, but it is up to yourself to, in the end, you'll be held accountable. Thank you. So I'll ask for the relevant council officer. Do you come forward, please?
Greg Thomas, Infrastructure and Environment Department.
Thank you, Mr Thomas. Mr Thomas, what's the normal process under our participation agreement for board member appointment and was this followed?
This was followed. However, I would suggest to you that the protocols that were agreed previously seem to have been somewhat diluted in terms of the communications back with council. Generally, there's a meeting of special majority, sorry, majority of the participants, like the mayors of each and the Lord Mayor of Brisbane, with the Chair of QU several months beforehand, as detailed in the board appointment protocol. So other than that, the nomination process for the individual applicants seems to have been followed.
My recollection, Mr Thomas, is that there is a protocol for there to be a board meeting for shareholders?
That's correct.
Was this meeting held?
I'm not aware of it being held.
Correct. Okay. I just wanted that on the record, that the protocols Urban Utilities normally have is to have a meeting. That meeting did not occur.
Yeah, and there's a timeframe for that to occur before the appointment process comes to the council for consideration.
Thank you, Mr Thomas. Any other questions, Mr Thomas? Thank you very much. I note that we have five recommendations to us. I think we should be looking at these individually. And so I'll go to the first recommendations, that council endorsed the reappointment of Julianne Schaefer as a board member of Urban Utilities effective the 1st of July 2021 for a term of three years. Do I have a second for that?
You'll second.
No? Councillor Tully, you'll second it? Thank you. I'll open the matter up for discussion. I think the only discussion I make, the fact that this has been an appointment that's already gone through, I think, the protocol process, so it has been approved by Brisbane City Council and I think the majority of the participating councils, so that's happening whether we vote for it or not today. Any other discussion? Okay. Those in favour, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I see that it's unanimous and carried. I move on to item B, which...
Beg your pardon, Mayor, so I don't believe that councillor Doyle raised her hand.
Oh, my apologies for that. Okay. I'll just do that, sorry, I'll do that again. My apologies for that. Those in favour of recommendation A, please raise your hand. I see that it's myself, councillor Tully, councillor Madsen, councillor Johnick, councillor Ireland, councillor Feigna and councillor Milligan. My apologies. Those against? No against. Those abstaining? Councillor Doyle is abstaining. So the motion is carried. Move on to recommendation B, that council endorsed the reappointment of Cathy Hirschfield as a board member of Urban Utilities effective the 1st of January 2022 for a term of three years and six months. I move that so we can go into discussion. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Feigna. I know I open this up for discussion because this one, I think, are we the first council to review this particular one? I'm getting a nod for Mr Thomas. I'm getting a nod for Mr Thomas. Noting that if we should discuss anything stuff in confidence, I will ask to go into closed session. Any discussion on this particular... My main thing, I guess, going into this, and it's based on, as well, I stated back on the 27th of May, my disappointment that a non, that there are no non-Brisbane people, that there was no one from Ipswich being put forward to us at this meeting. I put recommendation B to the vote. Those in favour of B, raise your hand. And I look around, it's myself, councillor Tully, councillor Madsen, councillor Johnick, councillor Ireland, councillor Feigna, councillor Milligan. Those against, there are no against. Those abstaining, and councillor Doyle is abstaining. The motion is passed. We move on to item C, which is that council endorsed the appointment of Amanda Cooper as a board member of Urban Utilities effective 1 July 2021 for a term of three years. I will move that so we can move into discussion. Do I have a second for that? Councillor Doyle is a second. Move into discussion. I'm going to make an assumption that we're going to move into some stuff and confidence matters. Would that be a correct assumption or... If not, okay, I'll open it up for discussion. Debate for Amanda Cooper? Okay. The only discussion I'd like to make is that Brisbane City Council have already agreed to that appointment. I'm looking at Mr Thomas. And also the majority participants have already voted for that, so that's happening regardless of how we vote today. Those in favour, please raise your hand. So it's myself, councillor Milligan, councillor Feigna, councillor Johnick, there's four of us. Those against, councillor Ireland. Those abstaining from this, I see that we have councillor Tully, councillor Madsen, councillor Doyle. So we have a four-four. So it didn't, oh, it doesn't pass. If it's, I'm just looking for some advices there. First time we've had this. Sorry? On the chair, I had the deciding vote. In that case, my deciding vote. Thank you, councillor Madsen.
Our meeting protocol.
Meeting, thank you. In that case, with the deciding vote, I vote... In that case, with the deciding vote, I vote that we do approve recommendation C. So that is carried.
Just a point of order.
Yeah, sure.
You have declared that carried?
It's my understanding under meeting procedure that yes.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah. It's just that there was a matter raised last year in relation to councillors who abstained, that even though the vote under the Act is taken in the negative, that it should be recorded that they abstained.
Yes, it should be recorded that abstained, that's not been had.
No, thank you.
Yes. Did that happen in the earlier ones, too, Vicky? Thank you, yes, definitely. Thank you, councillor Tully. I'll just wait for Vicky to fix up the other ones as well. I now move on to item D, which is that council endorsed the appointment of, I don't know if it's Lucia or Lucia Cade, as board member of Urban Utilities, effective 1 October 2021, for a term of three years and nine months. I'll move that, so we get that into discussion. A second, councillor Fettner. I now open that up for discussion. There being no discussion, I then move the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's myself, councillor Tully, councillor Madsen, councillor Johnick, councillor Ireland, councillor Fettner, councillor Milligan. Those against? There being none. Those abstaining? Councillor Doyle is abstaining. So the motion is carried. Recommendation E is that the chief executive officer be authorized to sign an instrument of appointment of board members to Urban Utilities and to do any other acts necessary to implement council's decision in accordance with section 13.3 of the Local Government Act 2009. I move that. Do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Fettner. I open that up for discussion. There being no discussion, I put that matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Okay, so it's my, so can I ask you to keep your hand? It's myself, councillor Madsen, councillor Johnick, councillor Ireland, councillor Fettner, councillor Milligan. Those against? Those abstaining. Councillor Tully, councillor Doyle. Thank you. I'd like to put a subsequent motion on this with your permission, council, and with your permission to write to Urban Utilities. I note that in our board papers, that we have three board members coming up for renewal, I think, end of June next year. With your permission, I'll be putting forward a motion that I write a letter to Urban Utilities voicing our disappointment, that we don't have anyone from Ipswich on that when we are 12% stakeholder, and that we request that we are engaged next year more proactively, and that the participation agreement is followed more accurately, to include, so this council can put forward names or the search, however the recruitment happens, include people from Ipswich to be considered as well now. The council write to Urban Utilities to discuss the board appointments or the next lot of board appointments to include someone from the Ipswich community to be on the board, or suitably qualified. I'm open to how you want to discuss how you wish to word that motion, but if I can have your permission to do that.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with that, but I certainly, in my view, given what's transpired over the last several weeks and months, I'm very displeased about the entire process. So I would like to see your letter or a letter from this council leading expressing the disappointment that the cooperation, the terms of the cooperation agreement has not been followed. And certainly out of respect for Ipswich and Ipswich ratepayers and this council, I'd like to see that be their first priority in engaging with us going forward.
Absolutely. Yes, councillor Milligan?
Mayor, I agree with councillor Doyle in that it should be more specifically about the failure of process as opposed to individuals.
Yes, thank you, councillor Milligan.
And locality of where people are from.
Yes. Thank you. Second, thank you. Okay, so the motion, I put that council write to Urban Utilities to discuss the next board appointments to include suitably qualified Ipswich residents. Councillor Fettner has seconded that. Any other discussion? The only other discussion I'll say on this matter is that of the, I think, two or three shareholder meetings that have been attended, where I've represented this council, I've been very focused on three things. One is that we have quality water and sewage supply to the residents. My second is to get that price parity for 10 years. The people of Ipswich should be paying higher water rates than the people of Brisbane. Very pleased that this did happen early this year. I've been very vocal on behalf of the residents of Ipswich to make sure that we have price parity, and that's finally happened with water. And the second, and the third thing is also to make sure that the organisation is efficient, so they do pay dividends to the shareholders as well. So that has been my focus, and I'm going forward.
Could I just have a comment? Even though I support that additional clause or paragraph, given that it's voted on in the whole context of this matter and my abstention from paragraphs, or from paragraph C, I will also abstain from this one, even though I agree with the sentiment.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Tully. In that case, I'll put the recommendation, I'll call it F, to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I see myself, councillor Johnick, councillor Doyle, councillor Ireland, councillor Fettner, councillor Milligan. Those against? There are no against. Those abstaining? Councillor Tully and councillor Madsen have abstained. The matter's carried. Thank you. We now move on to item three, which is the North Ipswich Sport and Entertainment Precinct business cases and national sporting expansion into Ipswich. May we have the relevant council officer come to the lectern, please? Could you please let your name and your job title?
Good morning, Mayor and council. Dan Heenan, coordinator, major projects advocacy in CCED branch.
My ask, Mr Heenan, I know you've only started with council early last year. When did you start working with the Jets bid team to, I guess, to support them, support our bid?
So, we started with, the dialogue with the Jets has been ongoing throughout the development of the business case. And did you want me to talk to that a little bit more, Matt?
I just look at timings at this stage, so what are some of the interactions that council have been having in support of this bid?
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
I think the community would like to know that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, early in the process, we engaged with the Jets as part of the development and framing of the business case for a new stadium, rectangular stadium over at North Ipswich Reserve. But more recently, since the NRL announced their expansion plans, we've been meeting regularly, almost daily, with the Jets to sort of understand how council can support their bid. I guess I'll start by saying, you know, I guess we're kind of excited that on Monday this week, the Jets actually made their NRL submission to be the 17th NRL team. And we know that they would be based right here in Ipswich, over at North Ipswich Reserve, but they would play their games at Suncorp as per the terms of the NRL's requirements. Council supported the bid in a couple of different ways. We worked with the Jets and a local manufacturing company to get some concept designs done for a high-performance training facility to be built over at Len Johnson Oval, next to their home ground. We also procured some letters of support from surrounding councils, from Lockyer Valley, Scenic Rim and Toowoomba. And I guess critically, you know, what we know about the Jets bid is it's a strong bid. It's a really strong bid, and we're really excited. But we have the best catchment, we have the most compelling catchment, we have the largest catchment. We have an established rugby league community, we have an established rugby league club, and we've also got the highest population growth, when we compare that to the other catchments. So, we're quite excited that when the NRL, you know, makes its announcement, we're optimistic that it'll hopefully be the Jets.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to point some of the highlights of this report?
Yeah, sure, sure. So... Yeah, I'll be very quick. So, I guess when we look ahead to the population growth that I mentioned, you know, the infrastructure, this is a project that's part of a package of infrastructure that a city of nearly 600,000 people will require. You know, in the report, we included a comparison of other similar-sized local governments. And when we look at Gold Coast is a really good example of kind of where they are today. They've got a population of nearly 600,000, they've got two stadiums, an entertainment centre, a convention centre, two museums and four galleries. That is, in my view, the aspiration for this city. At the moment, we're a long way short of that in terms of infrastructure. So, I guess it's about, so it's about the infrastructure play, it's about providing residents with the opportunity to attend local sporting and entertainment events. We've obviously got the Springfield Stadium under construction. You know, I think it's important to note that that services one market. A rectangular stadium would service a completely different market, and the business case addresses this, but we're of the view that the two would coexist really well in the city and enable our residents to enjoy the sports they love right here in Ipswich. I guess finally, I'd probably just comment to say that the two options that are developed in the business case, one is essentially a minimum option to meet NRL and A-League or APL as it is now, requirements, and option two is essentially our version of the Townsville Stadium. Finally, I'll just note that we've also scoped up the opportunity for Ipswich to host some sporting events, national sporting events, in terms of NRL and A-League or APL preseason games. Unfortunately, our stadium's not up to a standard that we can host a round, an official round of those competitions. And we feel it's a good way, hosting a preseason game here in Ipswich or two, to bring some local sporting content to the city, to give our residents, you know, those experiences ahead of us getting that stadium infrastructure. So...
Thank you. Could you outline the catchment area for this bid?
For the Jets bid?
For the Jets bid, yeah.
Sure. So, there's two ways in which the NRL looks at catchments. So one is obviously the local proximate population, and in that, and the clubs all kind of agree amongst themselves who essentially belongs to who. But we know that the Jets bid is founded on Ipswich, Toowoomba, Lockyer Valley, Scenic Rim. I think that was all locally. And then they've got player pathway agreements with Gladstone, Rocky and Livingston. So it's a substantial catchment. I believe the catchment is in the order of, or will be in the order of 1.2 million people, so it's massive.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions, Mr Heenan? No, thank you very much. I'd like to move that we put all, the three recommendations are: A, that council receive and note the contents of the strategic business case titled A Global Standard Sport and Entertainment Precinct in Ipswich; options analysis for the North Ipswich Sport and Entertainment Precinct, as well as the situational review and opportunities analysis, which is a confidential report; that B, that council endorse further engagement with both NRL and A-League expansion proponents to respond to updated bid requirements in the short term and receive at a future date a proposal for consideration; and C, that council endorse further engagement with both NRL and A-League into scope events attraction to Ipswich in the short term and receive at a future date a proposal for consideration. I move all three of those recommendations. Councillor Tully, I know you have a strong passion for NRL. Would you like to second those three?
Yeah, I'm happy to second that.
Thank you very much. Open it up for discussion.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'll just say a few words about that. This is an opportunity that we can't miss, because I think what was relevant was the population figures on the Gold Coast and population figures that would be nearing those sorts of figures, you know, over the next two or three decades. And it's an opportunity for, at one stage, we were known as Australia's sports city. I think that was probably, not completely, but probably based on the number of international rugby league representatives that we've had over the years, but also for our involvement in many other sports as well. And it's something that I personally like to see come back as a tagline for our city. But this is a real opportunity to have a, I would call it a prestige stadium and development. One, hopefully, that with the NRL and another team, if we win that, I would hope that some of the games at least would be played there. I know the proposal is for the majority to be at Suncorp Stadium, but I'd also like to see them in Toowoomba as well. I see Ipswich and Toowoomba as almost twin cities or sister cities, you know, in the Western Corridor. So I strongly support this motion.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Councillor Madsen?
Just following on from that twin cities concept of councillor Tully, I'd just like to remind everyone in the room that Ipswich and Toowoomba used to routinely beat Brisbane at rugby league. And if we pay any attention to rugby league locally, Ipswich State High School has probably the best development programme in the nation, but has always had the natural talent in the area. And, yeah, I think we've done a lot of heavy lifting supplying other teams, and it's time that we get our own.
Thank you, councillor Madsen. Look, and obviously I'm the patron of the Jets, so I'm very supportive and I've been very pleased with the support that council have given hands-on with the Jets as well, with the bid. But I guess coming back to the stadium here, the numbers don't lie. And I refer to page 26 of 649, there's a table there that Mr Heenan referred to. When you see our population base and you look at the social infrastructure provision, Ipswich is overdue for a stadium, for sport and also for entertainment as well, that I think will be, it is already one of our regionally significant projects on our list that we regularly lobby the state and federal governments for. So obviously I'm very supportive of this. I'm so pleased when I received a text from Steve Johnson to say, on Monday, to say that they had put the bid in. And obviously it's now in the hands of the gods with the ARL to decide where the 17th team is. But I guess to let the ARL know that Ipswich is rugby league heartland, that it has the full support of this city. And I think if they want a sport that really connects with their grassroots, is in the fastest growing part of Queensland, they look no further than Ipswich. So obviously I'll be supporting this motion wholeheartedly and working with our community to make sure that we get, that we are as competitive as possible. Any other discussion? I put those three recommendations to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And I see that it's unanimous and carried. We move on to item four. I haven't asked for you yet.
Oh, sorry.
Item four is the Blackall Monument relocation investigations. And this is a report concerning the potential relocation of the Blackall Monument, currently situated on Denmark Hill to its original location on Darcy Doyle Place in Ipswich. I'll just look at, I think councillor Doyle sort of started this off. Would you like me to ask the relevant council officer to this, or you're happy with the report? Happy with the report, okay. May I ask for a mover of this, councillor Doyle? May I have a second for this report? Thank you, councillor Johnick. Thank you. Although I put it up for discussion.
Yeah.
Yep, councillor Tully.
Just a couple of issues, just in the page two of the report, and bearing in mind, these reports will be online, I assume, somewhere in perpetuity. On page two, under the words Blackall Monument, down on the third line, it says the initial location, that is in 1927, that is within Darcy Doyle Place. Could some words be added to, because that wasn't Darcy Doyle Place, you know, then, because that was, you know, part of the road reserve, between Limestone Street and Brisbane Street. Can we just have some words in there for the sake of full understanding that within what is now Darcy Doyle Place? Or words to that effect, please?
So I think we're suggesting that the report be amended.
Yes. Within what is...
Instead of within, what were you suggesting?
Oh, within what is now Darcy Doyle Place, I think would cover it. Do you have one further matter?
CEO, any, any issues with that for the report?
I don't see any concerns about that. No, that's fine. Thank you.
Councillor Heenan, another one?
The, the second one is in relation to, and this bobs up in a number of reports, but it probably stands out pretty strongly here is paragraph B, where there's been a, um, an attachment which refers to an analysis of whether or not um, paragraph A, which is that the report be received and the contents noted, that that motion on its own is compatible with human rights and relevant, and relevant human rights um, have been given proper consideration. I, I raised the question of whether or not, in the context of actually just simply receiving and noting a report, whether or not that, uh, tha- that can raise the issue of, of human rights. And whose human rights? The, the rights of the coun- human rights of the councillors or the human rights of the corporation, if the corporation can have human rights? Um, I'm not suggesting that, um, that, that the issue is not being examined by officers on a, on a routine basis, but I'm not sure that a simple motion to, uh, receive an, um, a, a report and, and note the contents um, does raise any human rights. At, at the end of the report, like it's a pro- proper consideration, I guess, in relation to any report that officers write. But if there is no substantive, uh, determination of anyone's, uh, rights just to receive and note the report, I'm not sure that we need recommendation B.
Thank you. And I think councillor Tully, you'll note that, um, we've now adding this to all our motions and there's a six, there's six pages and it adds considerably to the report. So I'll hand over to the, the CEO on this because obviously it's, uh, part of our legislative requirements, is my understanding.
Uh, we certainly have legislative requirements. Thank you, thank you, Mayor, uh, in relation to the full implementation of the Human Rights Act. I, however, so we, we, we're learning as we go. As you've noted, this is a new process to include these, uh, impact assessments along with these reports to committee and council. Um, I would hold the view, uh, that I believe is aligned with councillor Tully, that as this is not, uh, a decision, uh, but you are receiving and noting the report and, uh, without even going to the, the point of who's hu- sorry, whose human rights would be impacted. Uh, I, um, I think we certainly as officers will, will work on and review the recommendations that we make uh, when it is a receive and note report. I, I think the guidance that I'm looking around for our general counsel, I can't see him in the room, um, but I think that we're, um, looking to strive to best practice and do the analysis, uh, to be sure. Uh, but I, I, I would agree that that second recommendation is not required in, in this report and, and potentially others on the agenda.
Okay.
Where it's a receive and note.
So councillor Tully, I'll take it, thank you very much, CEO. So I'll take it that we, you're looking at, and I'll speak to councillor Doyle and that's councillor Johnick, that we leave recommendation A as it is?
Yes.
Remove recommendation B. And if that, instead of recommendation B, um, be the, the what you'd put forward before, saying that, that amendment on page two, at the third line to clarify the wording, and make that recommendation, uh, B.
Yes, that's right. Thank you.
Would that be an accurate representation?
Yes, yeah. And could I just add, because this is, this is a, a work in progress in terms of human rights, um, e- even a town planning application, and this is coming up later.
Yes.
You know, is it the human rights of, of the residents, the human rights of the, the applicant, human rights of objectors? Um, it's a difficult situation, but I think this is the clearest example where there probably are no substantive or even any human rights, either of councillors or, or the corp- councillors of corporation.
I'll just go to the mover and the seconder. Councillor Doyle, um, your views on that um, proposal from councillor Tully?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor. I'm happy, um, with the proposed amendment and thank you, CEO, acting CEO Sonia Cooper, for, um, your commentary around that. And I absolutely appreciate this is a new piece of legislation, council officers. It's, you know, it's a work in progress. Um, they need to do the analysis to determine whether or not in fact does apply or is appropriate. And, and I accept that at some point it would be helpful, I guess, um, for an update on um, the decision making around the application of it from general counsel. Just so we, we as a group of, of councillors understand, um, council's position.
Certainly.
Thank you. Um, the seconder, councillor Johnick? You're happy with that? Okay. So that way, the, both of you, the seconder are happy with that amendment. Thank you, councillor Tully. Any other discussion on recommendation A and B, as can be seen on the screen? I'll read them out again just so it's, it's clear. Uh, A is the report be received and contents noted. And B is now, I'll just wait till it's up there. That the report be amended on page two, third line to clarify the wording to state within what is now Darcy Doyle Place in, in those brackets. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And I can see it's unanimous and carried. I suppose we went straight to the vote. I didn't ask for discussion.
I, you did ask.
Discussion? Okay. Thank you. Okay, item five. Uh, it's the One Nicholas Street and Ipswich Central Library Green Workplace Travel Plan. Um, this is a report concerning the development by Ipswich City Council of a corporate green workplace travel plan for One Nicholas Street and the, um, Ipswich Central Library. Would the councils like to speak to the relevant council officer on this? No? Okay. Uh, recommendation A is that the report be received in contents particularly the green workplace travel plan as detailed attachment one of the report by the transport planner, dated the seventeenth, may be noted. B, that the outcomes and key messages of the green workplace travel plan be communicated and promoted to Ipswich City Council employees. And C, recommendations A and B are compatible with human rights and relevant human rights have been given proper consideration in accordance with section fifty-eight-one of the Human Rights Act two thousand nineteen. So I'll move for that, um, recommendations, for those three recommendations together. Do we have a seconder? Councillor Fekner, thank you very much. I'll open it up for discussion.
I just want to say, uh, for the benefit of the committee, that I think this report is extremely well done. Um, there's a lot of detail in it and it's really exciting that moving to the new building later this month, um, that all of these things have been taken into consideration for greener alternatives for our, our employees getting to work. Um, it's a really big step for an organisation to have this kind of commitment, um, in, you know, it, in what's, would seem to be, um, a year that we should all be jumping on board and investigating these things. There's still a lot of um, businesses that lag in this sense. And I think that there's not enough of a push, uh, for, um, alternatives to combustion, particularly our own personalised ones and maybe three of them that are parked at home in the driveway, um, to actually get to work. And, um, I was really excited to, um, to speak with the mayor the other day about this report. Um, and considering some options that have never really been on the table to people before and potentially parking your one's car at work and commuting to the building rather than driving to and, um, and using your car in that way, just as, you know, different kinds of thinking. And I think that problem solving and the ability to be able to think about other ways of getting to work is really important. So I think that the organisation, um, should be really excited by all of the options that we have. Um, this is a very, very detailed report, um, and, um, and a really interesting read and quite aspirational. And I think that, um, it points to a, a better and greener future for our city and we're leading the way on that as an organisation in the new building.
Thank you, councillor Fekner. Nick Mas, CEO, um, on page fifty-nine, there was a, a section on financial resource implications. It's not clear to me in the recommendations whether this is asking for approval for additional FTE and this, and that, that would sort of certainly colour my vote. Um, I, I I concur with the report, but I guess when we're looking at additional re- resourcing, I guess after your and, uh, page fifty-nine of financial resource implications.
We'll just get to that, but we may need to invite the relevant general manager, mayor through you if, if that's.
My call for the.
Acceptable.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. Councillor Sean Mattigan, acting general manager of Infrastructure and Environment.
Thank you, Mr. Mattigan. I note in that implication on financial resources, um, this report identifies the need for council to acknowledge the importance of a travel plan coordinator. It goes on the role, may need to appoint, appoint someone. Is this, this is, is this paper asking for us to approve that or not? Or it's just highlighting that?
No, it's, it's highlighting that as, as councillor Fekner mentioned about being aspirational.
Okay.
You know, in an ideal world, um, would it be great to, to have that role within council, but within the constraints of the budget that we have, we wouldn't anticipate that we would be doing that anytime soon.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I concur with councillor Fekner. I think the docket was, was great. It was a really enjoyable read, very detailed in the analysis on where staff live, how they can travel different ways. And that's what I think during the week we were discussing councillor, um, you know, when I look at it, the main time I need to use myself, the car is if I'm going to appointments. So do I leave the car at, at the office and, and commute? So I think hopefully it's, it's, um, opening a lot of people's eyes in the organisation to how we can thi- do things differently to be, um, healthier, fitter and, and a more sustainable method of, of transport. So, yep. No other discussion? I'll put recommendations A, B and C to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We move on to item six, which is the Subregional Waste Alliance Evaluation Report. Um, I can see upfront, I don't, I don't think there may have been amendment, but I see upfront, says this report is considered confidential in accordance with section two five four J three G of the Local Government Regulations two, two thousand and twelve, as it contains information relating to negotiations relating to a commercial matter involving the local government for which a public discussion would be likely to prejudice the interest of the local government. Um, I do note that nothing was reported on, online to the public, just the, the name of it. Is that still accurate, my ask, CEO? Is that still the case?
Thank you, Mayor, through you as the chair. Uh, we, um, in working with the other participating councils in the Subregional Waste Alliance, uh, we're taking advice and considering very carefully the agreement between councils to keep, uh, matters that would be commercial in confidence, confidential as, as you would appreciate. However, uh, we may have gone too far here and as a consequence, we have, uh, published a late report that is now public.
Right.
Uh, which is a covering report that, uh, appropriately provides the community with the information that's not commercial in confidence to understand the matters that are before the committee, uh, for consideration today. So, uh, uh, we apologise that, uh, we did not have that, uh, appropriately handled when the papers were first issued. We'll certainly work to ensure that doesn't occur again.
Okay. So I'm just looking for this paper now. This is a.
It's got some quick advice from, um, from, uh, our manager of executive services that it's not public just yet. But we'll be following the meeting with the minutes. So we'll work to get that published as quickly as possible.
So under legislation, um, um, all voting has to occur in open. Um, I don't even know if I'm allowed to read out the recommendations that, that people are voting on. So I guess I'm after some advice. The recommendations are online?
Thank you, Ricky.
Okay. So what I'll do is I'll read out the recommendations and then we'll, we'll move forward from there. So there are five recommendations. Recommendation A is that council resolve the early, the recommendations as outlined in confidential attachment one and progress to the early tender involvement phase. Those participants identified subject to the decisions of other subregional waste alliance councils, resulting in minimum ongoing participation thresholds being reached. B, that all expressions of interest identified in confidential attachment one to not progress be set aside and not considered for further, uh, further for a subregion solution. C, that the chief executive officer notify the CEO of Logan City Council in writing of council's decisions in relation to the Subregional Waste Alliance Shortlisted Solutions Evaluation Report and Recommendations. D, that this report and attachments remain confidential until any contract resulting from this potential procurement process is awarded or otherwise, uh, details published in accordance with legislative requirements, subject to maintaining the confidentiality of legally privileged private and commercial in confidence information. And E, recommendations A to D are compatible with human rights and relevant human rights have been given proper consideration in accordance with section fifty-eight-one of the Human Rights Act two thousand and nineteen. Do I have a mover for those five recommendations? Thank you, councillor Fekner. Do I have a seconder? Thank you, councillor Maligan. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this, or they're happy with the reports? I see no, no call for that. I'll open it up for discussion. Now, if we're going to anything commercial in confidence, we will have to go into closed session. Any other discussion outside the reports? I think they're pretty self-explanatory. In that case, I'll put all five recommendations to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Um, I'd now like to call for an adjournment. I note that it is, uh, ten oh-two. I'll call for an adjournment to, uh, ten thirty. May I put that to the vote, please? Raise your hands if, thank you, it's unanimous. See you back at ten thirty. May I put that to the vote, please? Raise your hands. Thank you. It's unanimous. See you back at ten thirty.
Thank you, it's ten thirty, we've just come back from our adjournment. We are, I note that all the councils are here. Item seven is the Waste and Circular Economy Directive Update Three. The recommendations that the report we received and contents noted. Before we go anywhere, I guess we've got another one about Recommendation A, B, about human rights, which we can discuss later, I guess we'll be going to discussion. But in the meantime, may I have the relevant council officer to lectern please?
Your name and title?
Morning councillors, Brett Davy, Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Manager.
Thank you for this update, Mr Davy. In going through Attachment One, which is page, what, four twelve, four thirteen and so on, I see a lot of our actions and how we wish to move do depend heavily on terms of reference, this draft terms of reference with the state government, could you provide an update on that please?
Yes, so we've been exchanging a draft terms of reference to guide the operations of the Joint Task Force with state government, coordinating with various departments to achieve a final draft. I would say we're at about ninety percent, ninety five percent there in terms of that draft and we've got a set date for the first meeting of the Joint Task Force, which I'll be attending with the acting CEO and some other general managers.
Right, who will be at that meeting?
So from our end, it's the acting CEO, Peter Tabullo, I believe Sean Madigan will be in attendance as well as myself. From the externals, I haven't got a complete list from the state of each and every attendee, but it's director general level.
It's director general level, so department head?
The co-chair is Director General Jamie Merrick.
Okay, thank you, and when's that meeting?
Thirty.
Thirty of June?
Yes.
Thank you, could you highlight the areas that we've had some progress and the areas where we we haven't made progress and what we can do to assist that?
You are absolutely correct, Merin, that most of our actions in terms of the directive do rely quite heavily on the Joint Task Force. In terms of other areas of focus for myself and the execution of the project, I've been spending a fair bit of time with the industry big body to work towards a code of practice, so I'm still working through that, I don't have a set date on being able to complete that at this point in time, but I'm certainly making progress there. Internally, we're working on the stakeholder engagement plan to deal with the entire execution of the directive as well as the resource recovery strategy and other work that it was at Waste doing, and so I'm working closely with them on that. And a little bit of a highlight that's not in the paper because it didn't make, it wasn't resolved in time for the paper, is that internally we've been able to resolve as a collective of departments between planning and regulatory services and infrastructure and environment that we can use recycled product in pavements for development work delivered by developers but also our own projects for roads and pavements. And that's a bit of a win for the directive, so that helps promote circular economy in that the use of these products which are being sorted from waste now can help build a market for those products.
So council pavements will have some recycled product?
Yes, so of course there's still engineering standards to adhere to and we can rely on our own engineering standards in our planning scheme and other documents and also the state standards adopted by TMR, but it's a big win for us, I think. And the first step of hopefully many in us being able to circularise product.
Okay. Are there any areas that we're lagging behind that we need to put some more effort into in this particular project?
Look, to be honest, I'm a bit disappointed that I haven't made more progress with the code of practice, but that's a joint exercise with some externals. But I think we're doing doing well in building up to achieve the outcomes of the directive as many as possible, so a lot of it's going to depend on the Joint Task Force. So I'm putting some time at the moment with some of the senior bureaucrats in the state to work out a list of things that are problems for us as well as things that are problems and concerns for them and then to look at some policy levers that can we use to influence that space.
Okay, would a letter from this council assist or you would like to see how things go with the task force first?
Happy to work through that for now and I will certainly call upon the council if there is a need for additional support or interaction.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr Davy? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have two recommendations here, one the report we received and contents noted and obviously Recommendation B. See how you put your light on?
I did put my light on there, thank you. I would advise the similar process to the previous report, that the Recommendation B is not required in a in a report such as this where it does receive a note. I have taken the opportunity to confer with councils, General Council Tony Dunleavy, and he concurs with that advice.
Okay.
And we, I can speak further to other reports later on the agenda when there is in fact a decision to be made, if that's appropriate, thank you.
Thank you, in that case the Chair will move that we just have one recommendation, that the report be received and contents noted, do I have a second up for that? Thank you, Councilor, I'll now open this up for discussion. Any discussion? I think the main thing is that this council's been listening to residents and the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Directive is an important part while we still work on a new planning scheme and see what's happening with the federal government directives and state government directives. I thank the state government for participating in this, I think it's great that this meeting's going ahead on the thirtieth of June with department heads as well as, you know, our acting CEO and senior people in our own council to have those constructive, that constructive dialogue. It leverages off the visit that I think a number of DGs and DDGs and executive directors of state government departments made in the last month, month or two at Ipswich to see some of the landfill sites. So I think it's good progress and yes, I guess like everyone else, we're waiting to see what those terms of reference will be and the work that the task force will be doing will be vitally important for the people of Ipswich. Any other discussion? No, I'll put the mother to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand. I see it's unanimous and carried, thank you. We now move on to item eight, which is the Development Application Recommendation, one five one six slash one eight slash VA Variation Request, thirty six Charles Street, Riverview. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this? I think I'm getting a nod.
Yes, I would.
Yes, thank you, may I have the relevant council officer? Could you please start your name and your job title, please?
Good morning, Anthony Bowles, Acting Development Planning Manager.
I think Councilor Tell you had a question?
Yeah, just a couple of preliminary issues, I guess. The first one is why does this matter before the committee? Could I just, because most of these don't come up and it doesn't seem to be a matter of...
The application is for a variation request to change the effect of the planning scheme, so it's a significant development matter in that normally changes the planning scheme undertaken through a more statutory amendment process, so because there's a variation to the current planning scheme arrangements, it's considered to be worthy of consideration of the council.
Okay, thank you, I'll probably raise that other issue about paragraph B if that needs to be raised. But could I just say at this early stage, that is different from receiving and noting, but if the human rights issue is going to come up with every planning application...
Let's have that in discussion if that's okay, do you have any other questions of Mr Bowles?
No, that's fine at this stage, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor? Microphone.
Oh, thank you, thank you for the report, Mr Bowles, just for the benefit of residents. Can you just explain in layman's terms the consequences, I guess all the practicalities that will result for, you know, out of this proposed variation if we proceed with that? I note that the report says a variation request would permit future development for residential purposes within the expanded footprint. Now, later in the report we report, you talk that the part of the land which is recreation zone provides a separation to existing and future industrial activities located within the Swan Bank New Chum area and also serves, you know, just as importantly as the ecological function. So given those later comments in the report, how will, how is this being managed within the variation as a, you know, a good outcome, I guess, for both residents and the environment?
So the land is currently privately owned, but zoned for recreation uses. The request is to change a portion of the land to residential, so not the entire site?
No, the entire.
So there's also an existing portion that's currently for residential uses.
Yes.
So the remaining area remains in the residential zone and one of the outcomes that we're achieving through the conditions of the approval is rehabilitation of land along Six Mile Creek, including dedication of land for citywide linear purposes. So that immediately is a big benefit to council because we obtain that land and that land is rehabilitated for ecological purposes. Additionally, further land is dedicated to council for local recreation purposes to facilitate the recreation needs of the future residents and the existing residents in that locality. So from an ecological perspective, we have a large amount of land that will be rehabilitated and dedicated to council, we have remaining land that has ecological function that will, for the time being, being public, sorry, private ownership because there hasn't been a reconfiguration component lodged yet, so we're only dealing with the zoning essentially. But those matters will be considered in the future applications we'll get, but it's it's been identified that that rehabilitation will occur in the future and we'll obtain that land, so that's in terms of ecological function, that's quite a big benefit to council because at the moment it's quite degraded, infested with weeds, subject to illegal dumping, occasional motorbikes, those sort of things, so we'll be able to manage those impacts a lot better.
Okay, are you satisfied that the conditions or terms of the approval are tight enough, I guess, to ensure that the owner and developer here does achieve those outcomes that we're looking for?
So the the approval anticipates future applications, future subdivision applications and the basis of requiring the land for ecological purposes is sound and that's the approach that we take in other in other circumstances, in other areas where there's a linear creek, particularly areas where it's flooded and it can't be used for any other purpose. So achieving that outcome is the same approach that we'll take with the next application and there's good degree of certainty to that, as with the dedication of the park because it's identified that that need hasn't been fulfilled and it isn't identified in the local government's strategic plans. So the the approach we're taking is fairly standardised and it is commonplace, but the real the real important permit that materialises those requirements is the next one down the track, which is the subdivision application.
Do we know the maximum amount of lots in a potential future subdivision that would be allowed in this low-density residential development?
It could it could vary quite a bit depending on the subsequent reports that we've recommended that be submitted, so for example, we've got a preliminary noise report which identifies the noise extent in the area where we're fairly comfortable on the preliminary information, but when there's earthworks or changes to vegetation or road construction, you need a more detailed model to determine the impacts on the residential uses that would follow. That doesn't necessarily mean that that would have a huge impact on the number of lots, but it does potentially shape the number of lots that are suitable in that area and and other things that follow from that are, it will be up to the applicant to determine what the suitable road network is and that again has a flow-on effect on the number of lots. But to give you a number, it could be between maybe a hundred, maybe a hundred and twenty, but keeping in mind, that's including the portion to the north that is already in residence, so the additional amount, you know, somewhere between fifty, seventy five, a little hard to tell, to be honest, because earthworks need to be carried out and there's obviously site feasibility matters that the applicant will take into consideration that will impact the size of the lots that they are willing to market. So for example, if they desire a large number of small lots, they need to carry out the earthworks and do that feasibility stuff, the real sort of crunchy number stuff, to determine how many lots will actually go in there, but it it could vary. And another better way to probably envisage it would be the density is ten to fifteen dwellings per hectare, so, you know, that we've got that gross amount and that's, we, as a council, we have been effective in limiting the maximum density to fifteen, so we're not likely to see twenty dwellings per hectare, for example. We've defended decisions in the court on that point recently and been successful.
Thank you.
Mr Bowles, I'd look at Attachment Two, which is I think page four hundred and eight, the pretty picture with the pink and the green?
In the confidential?
No?
Or in the, in the report, in, or in the under-confidential?
The plans should...
That's not confidential.
There's supplementary information, that's all.
I'll just double check.
Just clarifying.
Yeah, please. It doesn't say that it's confidential in the report, but I'm happy to draft DA plans?
No, yep, that's fine.
Yep. Thank you for clarifying that. So my understanding is that the applicant is, currently has approval for the part that's in pale pink?
That's right.
And they've asked to have expand the residential there into the areas that are shaded green, hot pink and green, would that be correct? So legally, the part in the pale pink proceeds? And is it within council's permit to not agree with the green, the hot pink and the green, is that correct?
Well, the the two areas of green are areas that we have essentially refused that request, or we're not accepting that request. The the portion to the west is because you'll see a line that goes through the site and with a little label right at the top, I think it's called PM fifty line. That that line separate is the the current modelled dust emissions from nearby users.
What does PM fifty mean?
Particulate matter, I think it's fifty micrograms cubic metre, I'm sorry, that might not be correct. I'm not an expert in that, but that's my belief. So in that area, they had sought to have that piece of land in the residential load density zone. Because of the modelled dust and the substantial amount of work in determining that line, we have disagreed with that request and it isn't to be, isn't proposed to be in the load density zone. And to, to, just to close off with that point, I suppose, is the other southern dark green bit. The reason why that hasn't been included is because of some ecological concerns that we have, some vegetation matters of state environmental significance that we're seeking to protect.
And flood.
The flood is a little bit further to south, but predominantly the concern there was the ecological significance of that region of the site.
And what is the ecological significance of that site?
So that, the site has varied ecological certificate, but in that location there are some significant trees and habitat trees, so we're looking to protect that.
I guess I look at the, and the pale pink there, it's already been approved in the, I guess, the northwest, I guess, just to the, the west of the, the PM fifty line. My concern is for residents in those houses. Are there any conditions being put on those houses built in that area or what's being done to protect the people in those houses?
So the, those, the subdivision of that land, whilst it's in the residential zone, it will still be subject to further consideration. So we, we might not be able to overcome that difficulty, that, that constraint in that area. So even though it may be zoned to it, until we've carried out the, we've received the requests and we've seen the details of the requests, there may be creative ways to overcome that, but that could be a challenge for subdivision of that portion of the land.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, Mr Bowles? No. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you very much.
Oh, sorry, councillor Tully.
We, we were provided, I think all of us, a one-page document at the start of the meeting this morning. Are you aware of that document?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm just a bit confused. It doesn't have a lot of detail there. What's the, what's the basis of this document?
If I might speak to that, councillor Tully, and through you, Chair, that, that's just a just-in-case document. If anyone had feelings or thoughts otherwise, it's to help us justify our position if we were to, you know, as to how we were to proceed, rather than being, this is, this is not something that was circulated as part of the pack, but just an FYI.
It's my understanding, if you're going to oppose this, these are some of the grounds that you, that could be used, if that's the way that you were inclined to.
Right. So just to clarify, that that would, that would be sufficient for, under the Act, for if council went that way, where we need to give reasons for departing from an officer's recommendation, that that would satisfy that legislative requirement?
That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Correct.
Okay.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr Bowles.
Thank you.
Before I move into moving recommendations, I just refer to the acting CEO about whether recommendation B is relevant here or not, and that we're making a decision, not just a note, but which you approve. Can I ask some confirmation?
Thank you, Mayor. My advice would be to proceed to keep that recommendation. As indicated earlier, we are advancing the implementation of these assessments, noting that a company is one of the stakeholders, there's also an individual that has made a submission in relation to the matter. So the human rights impact assessment that is attached properly addresses those issues and I'd like to put that the recommendation remains and is considered and that it is considered by the council as to whether or not it is indeed compatible with human rights as per the, the advice.
Okay. Thank you very much, acting CEO. I move that we do recommendations A and B together and recommendation A is that council resolved to approve development application number one five one six slash two oh eight slash V A in part, subject to conditions and attachments, and recommendation B, that recommendation, recommendation A is compatible with human rights and relevant human rights have been given proper consideration in accordance with section fifty-eight-one of the Human Rights Act two thousand and nineteen Queensland. I'll move that. Do I have someone who will second that? Councillor Doyle, thank you. I know I put it up for discussion. Yep, councillor Tully?
Yeah, I'll do the easy one first in relation to that paragraph B. I guess that's on the outer limits of human rights. I think the other matters we've had where it's just simply receiving and noting is very clear. It still begs the question of what human rights are involved, the human rights of the applicant, the human rights of any objectives, the general wider human rights of the, of the community, but I accept what the acting CEO has said, that it's a, it's a, it's a matter in progress, but, but it'll be interesting to see what other councils do around Queensland, whether every town planning application would, would need a human rights determination.
Yes, I think we've sort of been clear that we, it's, it's new, it's a, it's a new act. Attachment five, if you go into the detail, does sort of walk through the steps and it does indicate, certainly step two does talk about that, that there is, it asks, does the proposed act or decision potentially affect human rights? It does say yes. I don't see if you have anything else to add to that.
Not at this stage, not further to, to what is there, given what I've already said.
The, the other issue is the, the matter, or a draft, I suppose, of the wording of that document that was provided to us, which are basically, the wording says that it cannot be supported. Could I, could I say this, that, and I'll, either as an amendment, as a, or as a foreshadowed motion, whatever is appropriate, I'd, I'd be willing to support that because if you read that and, and the fact that it, that it's, it shouldn't be supported because it conflicts with assessment benchmarks of the planning scheme, the state planning policy and other relevant matters, principally the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Policy Directive, and then it goes through matters which seem to me to be quite significant. At face value, I, I'd have difficulty in supporting paragraph A of the recommendation and I'll move the amendment that paragraph A be substituted with this, with this circulated proposal.
I think we probably have a bit of a discussion because obviously we've got the, myself and councillor Doyle have moved and seconded it. It'd be good for us, I think, to have a discussion unless you want to do a foreshadowed motion if this doesn't get up. Because I, I certainly would like to discuss the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Directive.
Well, I'll foreshadow it in a sense that I'll move that amendment, you know, after, after the discussion.
Yeah, if that's okay, we'll just, do you want to, yeah, I think it'd be good for us to have a discussion. This is probably the first DA that's come to us that is using the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Directive and it's the directive that says protect our residential amenity, which states we will actively discourage new waste industry developments in close proximity to residential areas where it's clear that development impacts will not be manageable on-site and will negatively detract from amenity. But the relevant part here is, at the same time, we will discourage residential encroachment in close proximity to areas designated for future industrial development. And I think that's what we're looking at here now, looking at that PM fifty line, you know, my concern is having any residential west of that, knowing full well that, we know that there's going to be dust and noise and other, other issues there.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree. You know, we daily, obviously, most of us receive complaints from residents regarding the negative impacts of, of the, the waste space that is within the Swan Bank area there. And you do, I do have concerns about any new residential developments, not only the negative consequences for those residents, but also how much transparency and educating there is for those people, prospective buyers purchasing that, that land, particularly if they're not from within Ipswich.
Yeah.
They, they won't necessarily immediately understand that there will be odour and, and dust issues potentially affecting where they live. So I guess that leaves us with the really difficult dilemma, do we, you know, make these decisions in, you know, to try and protect future residents?
Yeah, I believe the conditions imposed on this variation in terms of protecting the ecology of the surrounding land is quite a compelling, is quite a compelling condition to make and something that should be, or something that I definitely support in that it's taking what other, what lands, a land holding which would otherwise not have been, you know, treated to improve and improving that as part of, as part of this process. I think that, you know, it, it needs to be recognised that that is a part of the, a part of the planning matter that we're considering here this morning as well. And noting that, that Mr Bowles did say that any future development, you know, there would be significant hurdles for a potential future developer to come in if someone were to purchase this land and want to put, you know, say a hundred and twenty homes on it, that they would have to comply with, you know, planning legislation as well and, you know, this would effectively start again and how do we mitigate those risks for potential future residents there? What does the outlying industrial area look like at that point in time as well? I think that, you know, there are lots of future considerations that will, that will be made, you know, if, if this development is, is approved and the, and this particular zoning was extended by the amount laid out in, in the report that's in front of us all. You know, I think that, you know, that there are, this, this isn't the final line in the sand, there are safety nets to continue to consider our residency, something like this was, was supported and proceeded.
Thank you, councillor. I'm inclined to support the report, noting that those, those green areas where the applicant wanted to residential are not allowed, are not zoned a residential because of the impacts of, of New Chum, just nearby, as well as the ecological considerations as well in the southern part as well. I guess, councillor, I know you're very experienced in planning matters and, and so on. Do you have any other feedback on, on, on your views on here?
Only to the extent that, that what's in the circular today, that if those matters are, and I accept that they are substantially true, but on that basis, and, and the, you know, the fact that it conflicts with those matters which I mentioned previously, I'd have great difficulty in supporting the original proposal and on that basis, the, the, we should substitute the adoption of that as a paragraph A.
Yeah, I just would like to concur with councillor Tully's comments, you know, if it was the original application that was coming before us today, it probably would be a very, potentially a very different outcome. This is a variation.
Yep. Any other discussion? No? Okay, well, I'll put the recommendations A and B as they are. No, did we want to put, we've got the foreshadowed motion there? Did you want to talk more about the foreshadowed motion before we vote on this?
Yes, well, I will foreshadow, foreshadow that if the motion is, possibly it'd be appropriate to, to take A and B separately because B would stand in its own right even with an amendment. So I, I would foreshadow a motion to adopt the refusal based on the wording in the circulated document.
Did you wish to state, so it'd be the, based on the assessment benchmarks of the planning act?
Yeah, well, is it a, well, if, for the sake of the record, would it be appropriate to read the entire document? Okay. The proposed application cannot be supported in accordance with section sixty of the Planning Act two thousand and sixteen, as the proposal conflicts with the assessment benchmarks of the planning scheme and state planning policy and other relevant matters, principally the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Policy Directive. Assessment benchmarks, section forty-five five A one of the Planning Act with respect to ecology, one, the proposed development results in unacceptable ecological impacts because it, A, will not minimise impacts on or avoid significant adverse effects on the natural landscape character in that it does not retain or conserve, one, significant trees where possible, two, natural drainage patterns or open space systems, three, tracks of remnant vegetation, four, vegetated areas with biodiversity values and ecological value, five, significant areas of native vegetation and their associated wildlife habitats and linkages, six, will not avoid or minimise the adverse impacts on matters of state environmental significance, and two, the proposed development does not comply with the applicable assessment benchmarks and the state planning policy which warrants refusal of the development application being, one, Ipswich Planning Scheme Part twelve five, reconfiguring a lot code, two, Ipswich Planning Scheme Part four five, urban areas code, three, Ipswich Planning Scheme Part twelve, division four, vegetation management code, four, Ipswich Planning Scheme Part four, division seventeen, recreation code, five, the state planning policy, six, the Environmental Protection Act nineteen ninety-four, seven, the Nature Conservation Act nineteen ninety-two, eight, the Environmental Protection and Biodiversity Conservation Act nineteen ninety-nine. Other relevant matters, section forty-five five B of the Planning Act with respect to residential amenity, three, the proposal will result in unacceptable amenity impacts because it, A, does not discourage residential encroachments in close proximity to areas designated for future industrial development, four, the proposal is contrary to the policy directive as the proposal does not comply with directive five, protect our residential amenity of the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Policy Directive. So I'll foreshadow that.
And over the page.
Oh, sorry. Based on the matters set out in points one to four herein, a decision to approve the proposal cannot be supported on the basis that the development cannot be appropriately conditioned to address the above-listed inconsistencies with the assessment benchmarks and other relevant matters. So I'll propose that as a foreshadowed motion in the event that paragraph A is voted down.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. While we're still in discussion mode, I always look at, when we're looking at planning matters, councillor Tully, the obligations we have under the, you know, the state government's regional plan, where Ipswich is obligated to take in thirty percent of the growth that's happening in southeast Queensland and, and how do we get that, that right amenity and that balance of affordable living? It's one of those difficult things for us as, as councillors to decide.
Yeah, that, that's certainly true, but, but the wording of this is, is, to me, is overwhelming.
Councillor Tully, through you.
Yeah, but please. Actually, can I just let councillor Tully finish?
Yeah, I'll be brief. To, to me, it's overwhelming. This city has got a large amount of land to be developed, which I think can comply with state planning and other, other policies, but there are many issues here. As I said, I accept the, the accuracy of that and in this particular circumstance, you know, to me, it's overwhelming and, and that the, the, you know, that, that should be the decision of council.
Thank you. Councillor Fittin?
Yeah, just through you, Chair, and to councillor Tully's point, this document that was circulated this morning was to help support us, you know, make a decision either way about the, about, about the, about the matter that was before us. These aren't, the, these, in, in your view, having read the, having read the application in front of us, do you believe, do you believe that your foreshadowed motion truly encapsulates your thoughts and feelings on, on, on the, on the matter that's before us? I think that it's, it, it needs to be noted that this was for, for the benefit, if you, if you believe these things about, about the application in front of us, this is not the officer's recommendation, this is not supplementary information provided to us by planning experts, this is more of a, if, if this is how you felt, this is how you could support your decision in a legal way in the eyes of the law, because obviously if we refuse this today, there will be an appeal of the decision and we'll end in the Planning and Environment Court. This lays out in front of us in assistance to, to our decision-making to say that if you believe any one of these things true, then you could bring them to light in, in the meeting. And this is, this is how I understand this, the circular note that went around this morning. It is not planning advice, it is not saying that it believes that the things in, in this, in this note that was circulated this morning are true and correct and that the considerations haven't been made to consider these in, in the application, rather to, to support. um, rather to, to support us. And we might need, uh, the council officers to, to come and speak to this.
I think it'd be good to, if I asked the councillor the context of this that was on our desk when we arrived.
From, that's, that, and that, and that's just my, my taking of it. Um, so, Councilor Tully.
Thanks for that. Thank you, Council Fittner. That, that is a good summary essentially of the, the current. So the, the officer's recommendation and my recommendation is written in the report to approve the application. And I might break this into two components because there's two obvious parts in that document, one relating to ecology and one relating to Waste Transformation Directive. So the, the reason why the ecology was, um, noted as a, as a possibility, um, for consideration for refusal would be in the absence of the decision that's in front of us. The current, uh, proposal, uh, deals with the matters of ecology through the retention of land that we've proposed in the, the plan. So the recommendation to approve is on the basis that we're retaining those areas that are, um, of ecological certificate, significance. If we were to, if the decision of the council was to refuse the application, it would be necessary to identify that because we haven't got the ability to change what part approved because that, that decision's already been made. So given that there's large extensive ecological, uh, significant, um, vegetation on the original proposal, which would be the matter of the appeal, um, if the recommendation by the officer which excludes that area isn't taken up and the, the council chooses to refuse the application, we would need to defend or make representations about the entire original proposal. So that's probably the easier part to explain. So those matters have been dealt with through the assessment of the application and the recommendation deals with that by preserving the ecological function. So in the, in the case that we refuse the application, we have to reiterate that through the court and we need to identify that. So that's that, probably the small part. The waste transformation. That's, um, that's probably the, an, an interesting one because it's listed there as an other, other relevant matter rather than an assessment benchmark for, for a reason. It's a council policy. Um, council policies eventually make their way through all other council policies like the planning scheme. The planning scheme is currently being drafted. In an intermediate period, we've had the temporary local planning instrument. So the planning for this area is becoming more mature. But this request, um, supersedes both the policy, uh, and the new planning scheme. And in effect, the variation request is remending the planning scheme based on information submitted by.
I'll ask you if you could just talk about this piece of, rather than the application itself.
Oh, I.
We're, just after the context of, we walked in this morning, this was sitting on our desks. Would you give the context of why, is, is it a council recommendation or is it just advice?
No, no, that was advice, yeah.
It's, it's advice to assist the council if they choose to make a decision that's contrary to the recommendation. Uh, it, it can be difficult to
Yep.
create, um, reasons for refusal, so it's for the assistance of the council.
I've just got, uh, one further question. Um, uh, did, did you prepare this, this document? Yeah. So you stand by all the information in there?
Uh, no, my recommendation is that the proposal complies with the transformation directive. And I believe that, um, all efforts have been made to, um, you know, make that, sorry, uh, with the conditions that we've applied and the future applications that we, um, will receive on the side. It is up to the council to decide on the basis of our recommendation. And if the views are of the council that the efforts that we have made or the applicant have made are inadequate, or it doesn't meet that broad policy statement, uh, that would be an, an acceptable way to pose that view in, in terms of a reason for refusal. So the important element of that is identifying that it's a other relevant matter rather than an assessment benchmark.
Right. Thank you. Um, and I understand that, that the, the recommendation in the original report, but do you stand by the accuracy of the information in here?
As in the accuracy of the requirements or the.
The wording that you, that's been proposed.
My view is the assessment officer's, um, recommendation. My view is a recommendation.
Yeah, and I understand that, but, but this document o- on its own, is, does that, is, is that accurate in what, in what I'd read out previously?
That would have to be, that's the framing of what mi- might be your opinion if you don't believe that it applies.
Yeah, I understand that.
It isn't my view and it isn't, um, I can't predict your, um, your view on that policy given this broad statement.
But if we're going to rely on this, and I've foreshadowed a motion, I need to know that if you've written that, that, that the, and I've accepted that the factual information that's provided there is correct. No.
I, I can ans- answer that. So the, it's presented, um, as, as if it was something that you would be deciding to refuse the application. So it's, I don't believe it's a statement that represents the represent, the application. My view is that the, um, it does comply with the policy directive. Uh, if you were to, if you had a little different view and you were needing to submit, uh, your reasons for refusal, um, y- you could pose it in that way, but you may choose not to do that. You could change that, um, any way you see fit or you can devise your own reasons for refusal if you don't agree with the officer's recommendation.
Councilor, it's my understanding that, um, if we, if you were inclined to, based on what we've been given to refuse it, just to say, I refuse it, I don't like it because, uh, my understanding, this was advice provided by council officers. If you were inclined to, rather than just saying, I don't like it, I'll refuse it, this is a, I guess, a cheat sheet or something that you could use to rely on, on, and perhaps how you wish to, um, um, frame your argument as to why.
Could I just add that if, if we are getting documentation of, of this nature, and I accept, um, your advice of what the, uh, recommendation is, if we were going to go down this route, we need to be sure that the factual information co- you know, that's been put together, um, is, is factually correct, even though it's not your original recommendation. For example, that it's, um, unacceptable ecological impact and, and things of that. You know, we don't want to be relying on that for, for a resolution that, that we find out later. Not that, not, not that it wasn't your original recommendation, but that, that it had factual inaccuracies in it.
So to, to respond to that, the, I stand by the view relating to the ecological perspective on the basis of the original um, proposal. So I have no, um, lack of faith in that, uh, in the terms of the factual statements. Regarding the waste directive, that is a difficult matter to contend with because it is a broad policy statement. Uh, it has not necessarily been carried through the planning scheme. And I don't believe that that would be, um, a strong ground for refusal in the eyes of the court over the proceeding of the matter because there are, I could go on about that, but that's my, the truth is, I don't believe that would be a successful matter for the appeal, but it would be a potential reason for refusal if that was desired.
Mister Fittner, or Council Fittner?
Just for the benefit of the room, um, there, there's no mention of the specific application we're considering here this morning in, in this document, um, that was provided to us. Um, yeah, it's, it's more of a, you know, similar to the, um, similar to the cards that give us the, you know, the, the information that we need with regards to the act to be able to make a decision that is defensible, um, that is accurate and, and well, and well presented to, to have. So the, this is not an explanation of the proposal in front of us. I see this more as a, um, more, more as a guide that if we were going to make a decision to the contrary of the council officers, that we're well supported with words that would help us make that decision. Yep.
Uh, just one more comment. Um, the assistance is provided for a few reasons, obviously because it's difficult to come up with those reasons on the spot. But also there are assessment timeframes that we must adhere to. So if this decision isn't made now, we've only got about three days before a decision needs to be made, which would necessitate either a special council meeting or, um, some other scenario. We haven't received an extension, so the decision has to be made. Um, and if the decision is contrary to the assessment manager's recommendation, um, I felt it was necessary to provide assistance to the council.
Thank you. And there you go, Council Fittner, I think that clarification too, the fact that it's a, like the guides we have on conflicts of interest or other things on, on things, it's a, it's a generic guide. It doesn't say this particular applicant's, um, address and name. Would you like to keep your foreshadowed motion, Council Tully?
Yes, I will. I'll just, um, just make the passing comment that I, I think what's being said, and I understand the, the circumstances or the background or the, the way in which these have to be addressed because of our obligation to give reasons. But, but I think what's basically been, uh, uh, said professionally i- is that even though it's not consistent with the, um, proposed or the recommendation of the officers, it is factually correct and would be factually correct if the, um, council, um, adopted that. Um, whether or not it would survive an appeal, um, is, is a, a matter to be considered later.
Thank you. Any other discussion on, on this matter? Okay, I'll put, um, I've already got this, this recommendation, A and B, um, up, uh, by myself and Council Doyle. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Look in the room, it's myself, Council Mazin, Council Johnny, Council Doyle, uh, Council Fittner, Council Milligan. Um, thank you. Those against, Council Tully and Council Island, thank you. So the motion is carried. We move on to the next item. Next one's number nine, which is Proposed Ipswich Adopted, um, Infrastructure Charges Resolution Number One for twenty twenty-one. Uh, this is a report concerning the adoption of the proposed Ipswich Adopted Infrastructure Charges Resolution to replace the Ipswich Adopted Infrastructure Charges Resolution from last year. Uh, this is an annual exercise to ensure that the development charges keep pace with an increase in costs by applying the producer price index or the PPI for construction. Would I like to speak to the relevant council officer on this particular matter? No? Okay, the recommendation A is that council adopt the adopted infrastructure charges resolution as detailed in attachment one pursuant to section one, one through of the Planning Act two thousand and sixteen as the Ipswich Adopted Infrastructure Charges Resolution Number One of twenty twenty-one. And B, recommendation A is compatible with human rights and relevant, human rights have been given proper consideration courts with section fifty-eight, one of the Human Rights Act two thousand and nineteen. I'll move those two recommendations together. Do I have a second? Thank you, Council, uh, Milligan. Open the matter up for discussion. There being no discussion, I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item number ten, which is the Systemic Inspection Programme for Dog Registration. And this report is concerning the authorisation of council of a systemic inspection programme to identify unregistered dogs within the Ipswich local government area. Council recall that in August twenty twenty, it considered a similar report for the approval of the programme to run from February to June is now proposed to seek approval of a programme for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two year. We'd like to speak to the relevant council officer on this report. Yes? Thank you, may I ask for the relevant council officer? Could you please state your name and your job title?
Alicia Conorton, um, Compliance Manager of Compliance.
Thank you. Council Tully.
Yeah, just a query in relation to, um, paragraph B. Just for some explanation. Sorry, just in relation to paragraph B of your recommendation on page one of the report, uh, about confining it to residential properties. And I understand that would be the majority of cases, but I, I'm aware of situations where, where dogs are often kept on, um, industrial premises. Um, they may, may not be registered. Um, I knew of one case some years ago where a school was having a lot of problems and seven or eight Alsatian dogs were dropped off every afternoon and they roamed the, the, um, the entire precinct of, of the school. So if we don't include anything but residential properties, what mechanism is there for, uh, like random checking uh, rather than being complaint driven in respect of non-residential properties?
The systematic inspection programme enlarges the powers of the authorised officers to enter properties. Um, so I guess if it's a commercial property and it wasn't complaint based, then if we don't include commercial properties into the recommendation, then, um, I guess it would depend if those dogs are just, if they're registered as, as official guard dogs and there's another mechanism, but if they're just not always, you know, professional in the trained aspect of guard dogs, I don't believe there would be a provision. We would have to include it into the programme.
Yeah, thank, yeah, thanks. Is, is there any, um, how we put the programme together and what areas we, we cover, you know, the residential parts of all divisions, which I know you've referred to in the report. Um, is there any, um, um, if we took out the word residential, would that just give us the potential to, to cover all properties, um, i- if general issues arose rather than being complaint driven? Which might not always be the best mechanism for finding unregistered, uh, animals.
Possibly. It would depend if whoever owns the animal, where they've registered them to. If, if they've regi- registered them to that commercial premises, then, then yes, but they might, um, list their addresses. If they remove them off site, they could be registered to a different address as well.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Yeah, I was talking about dogs that are permanently on.
Permanently on our commercial premises.
Yeah, and, and, and would, would we lose anything by taking out the word residential? Would that enable the, that the individual programme and the properties, and it may be that, that, that you, you don't look at anything but the residential properties where the, the major concern was, but it would, if we just taking out that word, whether or not that just leaves open, uh, the, the ability to move in a slightly different direction, albeit on, on probably a fairly limited basis.
Uh, Councilor Tully, we need, okay, by the legislation, we have to stipulate, um, the properties that, that we are inspecting. So we would need, I don't believe we should remove the word residential. We'd need to incorporate residential and commercial properties.
Or, or just say, or, sorry, all properties.
Yeah, all properties.
Master Question, do we have a, a, um, programme to, um, um, inspect commercial properties? Is there a separate programme or there is none?
No, this is the programme.
Okay. So just want to get some clarification. Are we, are you looking to, perhaps looking at including all properties or, or what's your recommendation of residential and commercial? What's? Is there any difference?
Just by the legislation, I prefer that we, we stipulate a residential and commercial properties. All properties could include any land essentially.
Hmm.
Um.
Okay.
And by the legislation, it says you have to be, specify which type of properties you're inspecting. So to me, that's more compliant with the legislation.
Okay.
Well, I'd be happy with that if we added, and commercial properties, but perhaps over, it's, it's yearly that we need to pass this resolution? Or a similar resolution?
Yes, it's yearly. So in the legislation, um, there's two types. There's a selective inspection programme or a systematic inspection programme. So we've requested the systematic inspection programme and it says, um, for a time limit. Well, they've changed the legislation in two thousand and nineteen, so the, the actual act says six months or as prescribed by regulation. So the regulation changed in two thousand and nineteen to go up to twelve months. So every twelve months you basically need to, um, resolve the, um, in pro- programme again, sorry.
Yeah, look, I'd be happy with, with that change to add the and commercial, but if during the next year we could look at broadening the whole issue, whether, whether or not we put a lot of effort into that or not, we don't want to be prohibited from looking, because commercial doesn't comprise every, it's, it's, the properties in Ipswich obviously aren't just commercial and, and residential, there are others. Um, but if that could be looked at during the next year to see if we could have a, a wider description. So I'll, I'll propose that we add the words and, uh, after the residential, to add the words and commercial.
Any other questions for Ms Conorton? No, no, thank you very much, Ms Conorton.
Thank you, ma'am.
Council Tully, I'll take on, before I move this recommendation, um, based on what you. I haven't moved it yet, so that's, so I, so I can actually add that into, into it. Uh, that's what you're saying, that for recommendation B, I'll add the word, um, residential and commercial properties, is that, yep? Okay. So there are four recommendations here and I propose that we do them all together. Recommendation A is that the systemic inspection programme for unregistered dogs be undertaken from one July twenty twenty-one to thirty June twenty twenty-two. B, that the systemic inspection programme be restricted to residential and commercial properties in the Ipswich local government area. C, that the Animal Management Operations Manager publish a notice of the systemic inspection programme pursuant to section one, one, four of the Animal Management Cats and Dogs Act two thousand and eight. D, recommendation A is compatible with human rights and relevant human, uh, and relevant human rights have been given proper consideration in accordance with section, um, fifty-eight, one of the Human Rights Act. Might just check something with acting CEO, which should be recommendation A through to C or just A for the human rights part? To cover ourselves, I might just do A through to C is compatible.
I, I think certainly I would include recommendations A and B, but by all means to be say, recommendations A to C would be, would be not a problem. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. So we're moving this. Uh, D is recommendation A to C is compatible with human rights, et cetera. Thank you. I move those four. Do I have a second? Thank you, Council Doyle. I'll open it up for discussion. There being no for the discussion. Oh, sorry, is Council Milligan?
May I can I just?
May I just confirm with yourself that the advice given just before was that if commercial is included into item B, that it is still compliant with the act?
The advice that we had from the relevant council officer was basically the, we had to be specific with what properties we were looking at. And by doing residential, commercial, it was, I guess, a tighter and a better. I'll ask Ms Conorton to come back down further. Thank you councillor. Would you like to ask Ms Conorton your question?
Thanks, Chair. Ms Conorton, can I just confirm that by including the word commercial in item B, that it is still compliant with the act?
Yes, I believe, my opinion is that it's more compliant than stating all properties. Because it says you should specify the properties that are identified. And I think if we wrote, if it was recommended that all property, that could include any land, such as a park. So this is actually prescribing or identifying which properties we're attending, which is, to me, there would be residential, commercial or rural. So at the moment, the inspection programme would be restricted to the residential areas and the, any commercial properties.
With that additional, we don't include these two rural properties?
You could add that recommendation if you like, because that would still be compliant with the legislation. The legislation just says that you should describe the properties that the programme applies to.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you looking at a, proposing an amendment, councillor Milligan?
No, I would like to know the, if we were to do just residential and commercial, is there a reasoning why we would not do rural? Would someone in a residential property be able to state that was unfair? That we conducted the programme there because we don't cover all properties? I don't know. It's just, I'm just thinking outside the square.
Could I just, my thinking on that was probably fairly simple. The suggestion being that all properties are maybe too wide. And if you started adding some rural properties, would be residential properties as well. But for example, a school is probably not a commercial property as well. And I accept that, but I thought the suggestion that I made to review that over the next year, based on complaints and whatever, that would enable us to widen the description beyond just residential and commercial, to cover exactly things like that or non-commercial properties which weren't residential properties. So I think it's the first sort of step, just in case we are getting some issues.
I guess I look at this, the main, this instrument gives council officers authority to enter properties and to inspect. So it's, you know, when you look at people's property rights, it's a pretty big authority for us to give. And obviously we're expanding it from residential to commercial. I guess it's up to if you wish to move an amendment, councillor, to include rural and so on.
Oh, thank you, ma'am. I was just thinking outside the square, being devil's advocate, so to speak, that if it would be challengeable then because we don't include another subsection of property type.
How would it be challengeable?
I don't know. That's part of the question.
Are you making, moving an amendment or just making a comment?
Just making a comment.
Thank you councillor Milligan. Any other discussion? Thank you. No, I will then put these four to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. And it's unanimous and carried. Thank you. So we'll do next year. Item 11 is the exercise of delegation report. And this is a report concerning the application that had been determined by delegated authority by the 27th of April 2021 to the 25th of May 2021. I'll move just for recommendation A, knowing that this is just a receive and note the contents. And I'm getting a nod from the CEO. So there will be no recommendation B. I'll just check. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this matter? No? In that case, I'll move recommendation A. Do I have a seconda for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. I'll leave that open for discussion. There being no discussion, I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and passed. We now move on to item 12, which is the Planning and Environment Court Action Status Report. And this is, this report concerns a status update with respect to current planning and environment court actions, asserting the development planning applications. Again, I'll be putting forward that we do just recommendation A and not to do B, because we are just receiving and noting that the contents, even if we were discussing them. May I please have the relevant council officer down to speak to this report, please?
Good morning. Anthony Bowles, acting development planning manager.
Mr Bowles, thank you very much. I'm particularly interested in noting that there's the court, court cases currently underway, where it's council versus Land Trac BMI and Cleanaway. And obviously we have a number of residents attending that court case daily and we're getting regular reports on it as the elected reps to make sure that the views of the residents are being heard loud and clear in the Planning and Environment Court. I hear it's quite a complex case from the comments from the magistrate. But in particular, are you able to give the residents some type of succinct update on how that's progressing and how long that's going to take?
Okay, I'll be as succinct as I can. The first couple of weeks related to the Land Trac matter, we're currently in the midst of the Cleanaway matter. Yesterday, Wednesday, no, yesterday, I believe, the experts were landfill design. Quite a contentious matter for all three appeals. There are some visual expert matters today, tomorrow, potentially tomorrow, depending on the timeframes. So Cleanaway is the current focus. Austin BMI commences 14th of June. There is a bit of a break and then there's a bit more land track. So a little hard to say, but at least 14th of July for the next sort of major commencement of experts for BMI and then we'll have a few weeks after that. So at the end of all the experts, probably the one thing that a lot of people don't necessarily realise is that judgment isn't given immediately. It's something that can take over a year, even longer. So we will have this period of, this flurry of activity, quite a lot of effort, a lot of representations made and then silence for a year. So that needs to be understood by the community. But I think if there is interest in the community attending the court is a great idea, it's quite interesting. And there has been some, you know, robust views held by both the applicant and councillor.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on the court action status report?
Yes, I have one.
Yes, councillor.
It's on page three of five, division three, 40 Queen Street, Dinmore. The status says that the judgment was given, matter finalised, but it doesn't tell us succinctly what that was. And that's been there for a considerable time. So I'd ask two things. One, what was the outcome? And two, in future reports where they're finalised, can we just get a succinct summary of the outcome, please?
Yep. So that matter, I believe, was settled by consent. So we negotiated an outcome where we dealt with the matters of the refusal. The main aspect was the mining subsistence. I can provide, I can dig through my computer really quickly to give you some more information if you like.
No, I just want, so you're saying by consent, it was approved, subject to conditions?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, that's probably all, certainly all I'd need to know.
Yeah, I agree.
But just to say that it's judgments given and matter finalised, it doesn't tell us anything.
Yeah, I apologise. So we can provide more information.
No, that's fine. That's fine. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr Bowles? No, thank you very much, Mr Bowles.
Thank you.
So I move recommendation A, that the report be received in contents noted. Do I have a seconda for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. We move into discussion. I'll just note some of the emails from residents who were attending the court case. I think they've been emailing several of us. And in particular, I think, might have been last week, where the judge did make the comments that there was conflicting, I think, legislation, regulations, policy, planning schemes, draft planning schemes. It's a very complex matter. Maybe one of the most complex matters that's gone to the P and E court in Queensland. And that council's in there fighting for our residents and for our city to make sure that we get a fair deal for the people of Ipswich. Something that will provide for us in the long term and now as well. I think the judge will probably have over a thousand pages to assess. And I hope that it doesn't take a year, that he does do it, understand that it is a very sensitive matter. It's a very contentious issue for our community. And we are very much looking forward to a positive result in that court case. No other discussion? In that case, I put the recommendation to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Item 13, which is Amendment to Acquisition of Info 2725, Drainage Easement for Local Drainage Rehabilitation at Arthur Somerville's Road, Carrollay. This is a report concerning an amendment to the area for acquisition of an easement for drainage purposes for the local drainage rehabilitation project at Arthur Somerville's Road, Carrollay. May I have the relevant council officer to the lectern, please? Would you want to state your name and job title, please?
Good morning. Alicia Reek, Senior Property Officer.
Thank you, Alicia. This looks like this is something that's been going on for some time. And from what I can see, council asked for quite a lot of land and the resident was objected. And now we've renegotiated the land to be a lot smaller. Is that correct? Or what's your summary on this?
Yes, so that's definitely from a basic level. So the reduction in the area that we're considering now has gone back to consultants and that, because there was actually an existing drainage berm on the property. So the major objection by the owner of the property was that that's existing and that isn't something that would form part of the council project. And it would sort of be utilised with our drainage works once that project was undertaken. So we considered all of the objections. Unfortunately, also within that time, the approval to apply to the minister and stuff like that has a 12-month timeframe. So we lost all that capability as well in that time. So it is an amendment to an area, but it's come before council as well to consider because we have to sort of start the process again.
Okay. So when a resident objects and goes through the process, does that cost them money? Or was it their time? Or what's the impact to the resident?
It's probably time in this case. There was a written objection and they were also heard, because there's different options available under the legislation. Owners can bring in experts and stuff like that. So different scenarios can have costs attracted to it if they have legal representation and stuff like that. But in this particular circumstance, it was owner representation.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other questions? No, thanks, Ms Reek. Appreciate it. Thank you. I propose that we remove all four of these recommendations together. And recommendation A is that the previous council, the previous decision of council contained item three of the Growth and Infrastructure Committee 201903 dated the 12th of March 2019. Recommendation A be adopted at council's ordinary meeting on the 19th of March 2019 be repealed. That B, pursuant to section 6.1 of the Acquisition of Land Act 1967, council as constructing authority acquire an easement over land at 124 Arthur Somerville's Road, Carrollay, more particularly described as part of lot two on SP 249521, council reference 5114, for drainage purposes. C, that the method of acquiring the subject easement be by agreement with the affected persons in accordance with division three, Acquisition of Land Act 1967. Wherever the agreement cannot be reached or operational timeframes intervene, the method of acquiring the subject easement be in accordance with division two, Acquisition of Land Act 1967. And D, that council be kept informed as to the progress and outcome of the acquisition. So I propose we put all four of those together. Do I have a seconda to this, councillor Milligan? Thank you. I'll open the matter up for discussion. I guess my main thing is to make sure that residents have the ability to, I think, ask fair questions about their property is really important. And it's good to see that exercise and that council work with our residents on things like this. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Item 14 is the recommendation to award of council tender 16233, Road Traffic Control Services. And this is a report concerning the establishment of a preferred supplier arrangement for road traffic control services for a period of two years from the 1st of July 2021 to the 30th of June 2023 for an estimated spend of $6.6 million ex GST. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please?
Richard White, manager of procurement.
Thank you. I can see in the report, there are three companies that are being recommended. Are any of these companies headquartered based in Ipswich or have any subcontractors based in Ipswich? What's the local content?
None are headquartered. One does have a local depot, which is our existing supplier, who is being re-contracted through this.
Which ones are it?
Verifact. So yes, Verifact Traffic Control, PTYLTD have an existing depot. We've had them on contract for a number of years now. Traffex is, of course, I close that down. One is in Logan, one is in Brisbane. So the other two are currently headquartered outside of Ipswich.
Do we have any Ipswich owned and operated companies bid for this work?
Don't believe so. I've done, I did the scan through. I can come back with a full confirmation of that, but I don't believe so.
I guess it'd be interesting, is there anything we can do to, was there a reason why, if they didn't, was there a block? Or what can we do to support local industry? Because you would think that this-
It's a very hot market. So you'll see through the evaluation report, the significant consideration. In fact, quite a detailed approach to how we assess this one, taking a two envelope approach to consider both quantitative and qualitative. We've also only doing this for two years while we assess how we do this as a service and how we manage this contract. So instead of entering into a three or five-year PSA, which is usually what we're trying to do in this kind of circumstance, we recognise that we need to improve, A, the contract management. And rather than just jumping a new contract in there and keep doing what we're doing, we're putting one in as almost an interim while we do better practice improvement. So while we're doing that, I expect next time we go to market, it's going to be much more engaged. And certainly we're doing a lot over the next six months to try and better engage with our local suppliers and local industry, including industry development engagements, as well as we're doing, how do you write a tender and how you write a quote? We've done a series of those and we're looking at carrying those out over the next six months. If we look to, say, more economic, then I'd have to work with CAP with this one, but more economic development, how do we better lift some of the services? At the moment, the 15 or 20% for this is our key driver for that, beyond, say, CAT's work to draw business here.
I guess because it's now like a mini panel, there's three there, how do, how does the council decide which of these three companies get the business, knowing that obviously Verifact have a local contingent?
Yeah. So that's to be finalised. Generally, we do tend to have a preferred, like a first use supplier in those circumstances. The reason they've gone with three is the heat in this market, that it is often contested whether or not they'll have available crews. And particularly, and this is where I'm sort of hinting that we have to do our contracting better, particularly the shortness of the turnaround for our notification that we require a crew. At the moment, we're looking at 24, 48 hours and having just one on the hook is quite difficult with that. So I won't say that we're just going to go there. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And you'll see we've done quite well in our contract over the last few years and certainly have a strong working relationship with Verifact. But the reason we went with three is because, and across the region, this is the same. So there are better practices. I know Brisbane City Council, because of the way that they've established their certification, like to get roadworks put in place, you have to give a 28-day. So they know 20 days in advance, which gives them the ability to tell their suppliers, hey, we definitely need you for this date in the future. So they actually tend to get a better program up because of that.
We don't have that at the moment. What's?
Not at the moment, but there's certainly something we're looking at right now.
I think so.
About how we can better, be a better customer, which is- About how we can better, be a better customer, which is, is a key thing, I think. Sometimes it's missed, it's us being a good, good customer on the other side as well.
Thank you. Do you have any questions, Mr White? No, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Mr Tabula, may I ask you a few questions, but not so much about the tender, but about traffic management? We've had some emails about how things have changed over the years. I think it's probably appropriate to, to raise yourself or Alicia, or Ms Connaughton? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms Connaughton, I'm going to ask some questions without notice, so you need to come back to us. But I guess one thing we've noticed as a council, I guess it popped up with the ANZAC Day Services and others, that obviously around two thousand eight, the state laws changed when it came to who could do traffic management and that's been a changing space. And I guess it happened at the same time as the previous council was dismissed. And it's, I guess we're sort of grappling with this. Would you mind giving a bit of a summary as to the state legislation changing and what that's meant for councils and, and I guess community groups doing events?
I think it's meant not, I think it's, um. I guess it, to go back to why the changes occurred, it was to do with road safety. Like I guess roadworks are a dangerous place and people were dying. So the ombudsman made a recommendation to essentially professionalise the industry and, and regulate it. Prior to that, there, there wasn't, I guess, a strong regulation around it. And they had turned it, turned the industry into actually, it has, it's professional now and it has a career path. So with any sort of increased regulation comes increased cost. So there was restrictions put around, you have to be a registered with Transport and Main Roads to be a service provider. They also regulate the training material and the content. They keep lists of who are the qualified persons. So they made, I guess, a list of competent persons and what, and then gave each level of what a competent person is, what they could do within their area. So the main, the main ones are, traffic controllers are now registered and registered with Department of Main Roads. And they also have to qualify, have a certain amount of hours and then are kept on a register with Main Roads. Then the next level is, probably a lot of people, when you look at roadworks, you don't realise the level of hierarchy. So the person with the sign is a traffic controller. The next person that is allowed to go and put the signs out on the road, they actually have a qualification. And that's called Implement Traffic Management, T M I, Traffic Management Implementation. So that means you're allowed to essentially put the signs on the road. Then the person that draws up the plans for where the signs go, they are called a traffic management designer. Traffic management designer are the only people that are allowed to go out and audit a setup, make sure that the setup on the road has been done as per the plan and, and meets the guidelines. So the legislation prescribes that T M R are allowed to have a guideline for the temporary traffic management. That guideline is what they call the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And that's the, the, where they change, they don't have to change the whole legislation. And then so T M R also keep a, a register of, and they audit and control the traffic management companies. So to operate on state roads and then, when you operate on state roads, a lot of the time there's intersection with local government roads. So technically, if you're just doing traffic control on a local government road, you don't need to use a registered traffic management company. But our standards are, because we know that T M R regulate the industry and make sure that they're professional, we require that they are a registered traffic management company. So that's, I guess, a safety or a, a standard that we've imposed. I know some other local governments will allow unregistered traffic management companies to operate in the area, but then they also complain about the standard of control they get.
Sorry, can I just understand, Alicia, prior to the legislative changes, am I correct that council, for instance, would be able to provide traffic management support to community groups?
We did provide it, it, and we can provide it and provide it on a local government road. So we wouldn't be able to provide any traffic control that, where, where a state road was, was involved. Because any work on a state road has to be by a registered traffic management company.
I'm just trying to, I guess, understand the history here because I know traditionally, certainly within Ipswich, amongst our community groups, whether it's ANZAC Day or another commemorative day, traffic management was traditionally provided by. Ipswich City Council. And obviously with the change in legislation and, and change in procedures by us, it's, it's increased the costs, I guess, for these community groups, having to engage the services of a professional traffic management organisation. So I'm just trying to understand though, that the changes were implemented and, and I, noting a lot of, I guess, the commemorative services do take place on, on state controlled roads and therefore that triggers the requirement for professional traffic management services?
Okay, so if, if the traffic control is, or the event is incorporating a state controlled road, then council would not be able to do it because their state requirement is that they have to be a registered traffic management company with the state. I guess going back over the ten years of history and, and not to, I don't want to point blame or anything, but I guess if, once I went back ten years, it was fairly evident that the traffic control was conducted but didn't necessarily have a conforming traffic management guidance scheme to. The traffic management was implemented the way that we had always done it and the way that everyone knew worked. But did it have the actual required traffic guidance scheme? Largely, I, I saw that there wasn't. The crews just went out and did the road closures as they had always done. Then like in the later half, yes, they did started getting plan, appropriate plans drawn up. And then the cost was, I guess, borne by council and the crews went out. So I guess it's not that council couldn't do the traffic control. It's probably more of a corporate decision that we don't do traffic control for our own construction works. So it's a decision as to whether council wanted to go that way and then provide that as an in-cod service to events, as long as it didn't involve a state road.
Hmm, okay. We might need to have another discussion, I think.
Sorry, councillor Doyle, there are local governments that can become, so I have noticed other local governments are registered traffic management providers.
That was kind of my question, yes, registered with transport, are we, are we, for instance, registered?
We could become registered, but we're not.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, councillor Madison.
My question would be, have we ever conducted a cost benefit analysis on whether we should, should become one?
Not necessarily in my area, but I believe that's why, oh, okay, so us becoming a registered, so we, we could become a registered traffic management provider and I guess for a corporate decision, use that in a, in a limited fashion. I believe, and this is just through inquiries I've made, so it's not verified fact, that the corporate decision, and it was made about twenty years ago, was due to the fact that if we then provided all our own traffic control, it's, it was a cost decision. So then you don't just have construction crews, you have, you'd have to have whole traffic control crews. So if there, there's rain affected days, then you have double the people who can't work. I guess there's an insurance point to that as well, so. And not all of this is my area of responsibility, like I have the knowledge, but it would take sort of, I guess, Shaun's I E D area to be involved in discussions as to how they would want to implement that or what would be required to implement that.
Thank you, I think councillor Madison. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Ms Connaughton? No, thank you very much for taking those questions without notice. Thank you, so I think we probably get into discussion, so I'll, I'll move all four of these together. That in accordance, a recommendation is that in accordance with section two, three, three of the Local Government Regulation twenty twelve, council solicitors preferred supplier arrangement, supply road traffic control. B, that council enter a contract for the supply of road traffic control services with suppliers listed below for a period of up to two years. Those companies are acquired awareness Traffic Management Pty Limited, Traffics Australia Pty Limited, Verifact Traffic Pty Limited. And C, that the chief executive officer be authorised to negotiate and finalise the terms of the contract to be executed by council and to do any other acts necessary to implement council's decision in accordance with section thirteen, three of the Local Government Act twenty oh nine. D, recommendation A is compatible with human rights. I might, I'm going to change that. Recommendation A and B is compatible with human rights and relevant human rights have been given proper consideration in accordance with section fifty eight, one of the Human Rights Act twenty nineteen Queensland. So I'll move that, do I have a second, councillor Doyle, thank you? I'll open it up for discussion, I think councillor Madison, you had.
Yeah, I'd just say that I'm happy with the procurement process and what's recommended to us today. And this is just certainly an investigation I think we could undertake during the term that discovers matters of public policy and approaches to what is and isn't the best thing to do. That's, that's something where people follow trends. If we haven't looked at a proper cost analysis of what it would be to do it internally for over twenty years, I'd say that we're probably due to do that. And that, that isn't an exercise with a decision in mind. It could verify how we currently approach this and it could propose other alternatives with some rigor behind it. I think that's good public administration to actually canvass all of our options rather than sticking to something that was made twenty years ago and never investigating it again. But that being said, I refer to my original comments that there's absolutely nothing wrong with this procurement process and it looks like it'll be a good option for the next couple of years.
Thank you, councillor Madison. Any other points for discussion? I think for myself, certainly it's a substantial procurement, being six point six million dollars X G S T. I know I did wander off to another area, but I thought it was very important because it is a significant contract. It's certainly something we have, I think, we're coming to terms with, with when we have events and road, I think, not so much road careers, but when we've had civic events, as to why have traffic management things changed? Because I think in the past, council officers or volunteer, wonderful volunteers like at the S E S used to put up the road close sign, that legally that cannot happen anymore. So that is actually, as we work through our civic events policy, that we're now making sure that that's, that's costed in. So we have good governance, so each of the organisations that is, is doing any, an event that involves traffic management, I guess we're doing it in good governance and budgeting for it. So I thought it was very important for us to, to cover off that and I guess increase public awareness of, of that the law has changed in the last few years. There being no other discussion, looking around. I'll put all four recommendations to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and passed. Onto the last item. Item fifteen, the I E D Capital Portfolio Financial Performance Report, April twenty twenty one. This is a report concerning Infrastructure Environment Department, I E D's capital portfolio financial performance for the period ending thirty April twenty twenty one. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern please?
Good afternoon, Shaun Madigan, general manager of Infrastructure and Environment.
Thank you, Mr Madigan. I refer to page six, three, two, the overview of the financial performance. And just in that, that paragraph, it says the actual expenditure in April was eight point nine million against a recent revised forecast of nine point six million. And that the capital portfolio has a year to date spend of forty five point three million and anticipated end of financial forecastment of seventy three point nine million as at the thirtieth of April. I guess I won't, we're looking at the fact that it's, that's a big delta.
It is.
I'm wondering how we are delivering against the capital works and how, yeah, how's it progressing?
So in, in terms of how we're travelling, this, I'll put the caveat on there that yet again, we're back ending all of the delivery of our projects. We are forecasting at this stage to be approximately three million dollars underspent at the end of the financial year, which means approximately, I think it's between eight and ten projects will be carried over. So that means we are conducting the works at the moment, but they won't be completed by the end of the financial year. So that remaining three mil, two to three million underspend will be spent in the first two months of next financial year. And the finance team carry over that capital funds, so it's not in addition to the, the capital budget for next year.
I guess, so if I could ask, are any of the project, have any projects stopped? Or is it just a matter of it's eight to ten projects are deferred, they're going to be delayed?
That's right, yeah, they're, they're all under, underway, at various stages of, of design and construction and procurement. By the end of the year, they will be underway, so there's some Kerben Channel projects. And I'll be able to provide the, the councils with a list of those that I can distribute. And, but there are no projects that are not being delivered. So some of them will just be finalised in August instead of being finalised prior to thirty of June.
Are you happy that your, your team will be able to deliver, I guess, the next years of capital works project as well as eight to ten projects carry over from this financial year? What are, what are you doing to make sure that that can happen?
Yeah, a couple of key points, so we, we have established our, our capital delivery branch. We have bolstered our, our design and getting ahead of the game. So when we, you would have seen on the, the budgets and the spends of this financial year, that often in, in July, August, September, you know, we were lucky to be hitting three million dollars of capital spend for the department. What you will see commencing our next financial year is a more proportionate spend over the course of the year. So we, we are geared up completely to deliver the capital portfolio of next year. The projects that are, sort of the overrun ones are predominantly with contractors. So the contractors will continue to deliver those works in, in July and August, which then enables all of our workforce and our other contracts to continue. So, you know, we are in a very good position. We have set ourselves the, the ambitious goal of delivering a hundred percent of our capital portfolio next year, which I think is a significant shift from where we have been in, in previous years. But we are committed to it and have structured and prepared ourselves for next financial year accordingly. We are in, the team is, is very confident, we are in such a, a better position when it comes to a variety of factors, including procurement and project management and structure to deliver that capital portfolio. One of the other things that we are doing commencing in the, the new financial year around the reporting, so as you will see, this report is prepared by our, our finance team in consultation with I E D. Commencing in the new financial year, we will actually provide you an infrastructure and environment report that includes some of the financial information that is signed off by the chief financial officer verifying it. But we will also talk about project programme and portfolio schedules. So rather than just reporting on the overs and unders when it comes to budget, we will actually report to you on where we're at on delivering the specific projects that were listed in the capital portfolio. What that does is, is that it improves transparency for the councillors and the community and it certainly holds the Infrastructure and Environment Department to account, to deliver on what we said we will deliver. So in, in, in terms of some of that underspend, the significant one is the S G A duplication. So B M D are down on site and working at present with some early works and there's a, some relocation work and a bit of stuff going on there. They are on site, that was a circa one million dollar delay that didn't go through in, in April, but will come through prior to financial year. So in, in terms of, you know, that, as you said, that delta there, there's some significant pieces of expenditure occurring over the next sort of six to eight weeks. Sorry, the next three weeks rather, that will bring us back to where we think we're going to be, which is about that three million short of the seventy two point nine million.
Thank you, and I also note that you've inherited this, this year as well.
I have, yes, yeah, but as I indicated, this is the challenge you have when you, you back end, you know, and historically, this is what has always happened, we've always had capital carryover. The very nature of projects, you know, they don't necessarily finish on thirty June, so there, there will always be some obvious carryover. But we should have our programmes and scheduling to the point where we can articulate that and present that to the council well in advance of, of, you know, this, this sort of June meeting to say that these are the projects that we'll be going over. And we will, by providing that information, as I said, it's transparency and it's accountability. And also the community can see when we're scheduled to complete those projects that are going over a financial year.
Thank you, Mr Madigan, are there any other questions, Mr Madigan? Yes, councillor Ireland.
Thank you, I'm just wondering, the Springfield Road upgrade, it's going to go past the contractual completion date. So will, will there be any money involved? So will, will there be any money involved because we're going past our contracted date?
Not to my knowledge, no.
And just so everyone knows, the North Station Road, I have declared a conflict previously, so.
Yeah, so that, that extension of the contract time, that's just, has occurred as a number of different factors. And to my understanding, there's no specific extension of time claim that's been put forward by the contractor.
Any other questions, Mr Madigan? No? No? Okay, thank you, Mr Madigan. I'll be putting recommendation A only up. I think B on the human rights is, we won't be proceeding. So recommendation A is that the monthly financial performance report on the Infrastructure and Environment Department's capital portfolio budget for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one be received and contents noted. May I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. I'll open it up for discussion. I guess my main discussion, as I'm, I'm happy with the changes that I E D are making, especially regards to the design branch. It's probably an area that we've, you know, we haven't had those, we've had, you know, government grants come to us with wanting shovel ready projects. And that's, that's been, we've been lacking in that area. So it's good to see that work there, but also good to see that there are changes afoot with how I E D will be delivering work and contracting work out as well, a more evenness throughout the financial year, rather than back ending at the end of the financial year for delivery. And I think we look forward to showing the residents how we're progressing with the capital works project. Last year when we published our three year capital works project, it was the first time this, this council has done that. And we have that interactive map as well, which I know has been really well received in the community. So I look forward to us being accountable to residents for delivering on that capital works programme. Any other comment? No, I'll put recommendation A to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous and carried. I don't have any notices of motion here, no matters arising, so therefore, or no procedural motions before matters. So therefore I'll finish this meeting at twelve oh nine. And for the next committee meeting, now I think it's close to, it's lunchtime, lunch is on. So we'll meet again at, at one o'clock or do people want us to start earlier? One o'clock, we'll get back here at one o'clock. Thank you very much, your time. Thanks.